It's Tuesday, February 6th on or about seven after, five minutes after seven. Actually, seven minutes after seven. And we'd like to open the business meeting for the zoning Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. And another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. First order of business is the monthly finance update. Patty Patari, you want to take it away?
Really, I don't have the full revolving. Nothing's changed. No more, no new deposits. So I'm just focusing right now because it's been busy in the office on the postage meter. So we're down, go to, under the new business cover page. We're down to $112. $112, we have to keep a $50 minimum. And with these other things that I see coming down the line, they're in downtown, they're going to be big butters lists, which will eat up the postage meter. So I just recommend adding $200 from the revolving account to the postage meter. So I need a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion to deposit $200 into the postage meter from the ZBA revolving account.
Second. And the account number, well, it's been seconded. Any discussion? The classification account is posted on the warrant there.
Yes, and here's the warrant, the original to sign, please.
Thank you.
I need all five on them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, if you want to sign that.
So that'll bring us up.
So you have the minutes from December 5th, right?
Yeah, we can probably do all business and hearing minutes of December 5th.
Is everybody here?
It was.
Dave, Paul, and Jeff.
Yeah, so Gina.
So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the business meeting and hearing minutes of December 5th?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the business meeting and the hearing meeting of December 5th, 2017. The minutes are ZBA file 18-03.
Second.
Thanks, Dave. Any discussion on this?
Can Dave vote? That was, that's including, oh, your 40B minutes, I stuck in there because it was too large to stick in the packet, but I think he can because...
He was here.
He was here, as long as he was here.
You want to second that, just in case?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Just put Dave at second. All right, we have any discussion on this, guys?
No, thanks.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
That does include the motion, the mellow request to continue.
Yep.
The correspondence. This is a memo from billing inspector dated January 16th to Nancy McCann. This is 51 West Main Street. This is Settlers Antiques. And she requested a, it's not a denial, it's a zoning determination. Basically, from what I understand, if you've had a chance to read it, it's in your email, it was mailed out. CA zone requires a minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet. And then the use schedule kicks in, and if the multifamily units or apartments, you need that same, what we're dealing with with the 40B, the 10,000 square feet for the first two units. So this is settlers where the business is on the bottom, and they're looking to put units, I believe, just above. But there's more information in this, in this letter.
Yeah, the interesting thing about that is it appears that a special permit, the same special permit may be required by more than one board, so it's a little bit confusing.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's got planning wood special permit.
We'll talk about that later.
Mixed use, and then it's got planning wood, more than one building on a lot. Each do more than one building on a lot, so...
There's some overlap there that we might want to straighten that out. I did speak with Les on this. So as that moves along, we can have further discussion about what's required.
Okay. The last thing was just a copy of the budget sheets. And there was an email from town administrator, December 7th, given after our meeting. That was already submitted. I just had left that in here from them. And Mike had us leave the personnel services blank and just fill in the office supplies, which are, they're just leveled at the, not the 860 we used to have, but the $220 we have left. So I just carried that over.
You got a date yet for budgets middle?
Yeah, I didn't get an email, but I actually sent an email to Mike today, and I guess it's Saturday, because usually we know a whole month ahead of time when they do it. I happened to see it on the town website. So that is February 10th.
Oh, weird, okay.
Yeah, I just found out, but I can't, I'm not here.
Got the email you sent me today?
Yeah, that's the one I sent you.
All right, I saw it. Carefully enough, obviously. Okay.
That's what I got.
So old business, is there a new application to distribute tonight, or no?
Nope. There's, you know, I've been working on a lot, a lot of inquiries coming in, talking to Les with this one letter, and then general things within the other items, properties that are looking to come in and getting zoning determinations of the same thing, of the store below, when they want to put units, say, above.
Okay.
So a couple accessory apartment I talked about, but nothing's come in. Hopefully, wait until the 40B is done.
Anything that would come in would be no sooner than March before this board. Anything that would come in?
Anything that comes in now would, anything...
Nothing new for March, excuse me, be April.
Anything that came in now would be April 3rd. Because we have 65 days, other than the conservation of 21.
Okay, are there any items anybody needs to bring up that would not be reasonably anticipated in 48 hours? Anybody, I think you need to bring up at this point?
Nope.
No? Okay. Given that, I'll hear a motion to close the business meeting.
Could I make a motion to close the business meeting for February 6th, 2018?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, business meeting is closed. We will reconvene at 7:30 for tonight's hearing. You can't start the hearing before 7:30 for those in the audience that may be watching. So we'll be back online here at 7:30 for tonight's hearings, okay?
Yes, want a water?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This, wait.
He's Richard. From Lynnfield Engineering.
Yeah, Rick Barthamas.
How do you say it?
Barthamas.
Barthamas, okay.
Oh, there you go. So, we're gonna open 34 East Main Street first. Be aware that, 'cause they're gonna continue, so.
Yes, go on.
Okay. Ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to reopen the hearing. It's about 7:30. I'd like to reopen the hearing for 34 East Main Street. I've already read the rules of procedure, so we can waive that. We're gonna start the hearing with a new correspondence dated January 23rd from Shawna Jamel, who is general counselor for the Alson Company, who is the applicant in this case, to Patty Patari. Patty, please allow this email to serve as my request on behalf of Alan P. Alson, Sr., to continue the 34 East Main Street hearing until March 6, 2018. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Shawna. So, I'd like to hear a motion to continue the hearing for 34 East Main Street to March 6, 2018.
At 7:30.
At 7:30, it'll be the first hearing that night, correct?
Yes.
Why did I say so moved?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Paul?
Aye.
That tie goes, they go right. Okay. Any discussion on this?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Okay. The hearing is continued. Okay. Bear with me for just a moment.
Would you want this? You can back.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. All right, so I'd like to go ahead and reopen the hearing for 203 East Main Street. The first order of business will be the legal ad, and I'm gonna ask if someone wants to make a motion to waive the reading of the legal ad, since we did that.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the legal ad.
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, any discussion on that?
Mm-mm.
For the benefit of some audience members who are not here, or who are here for the first time, and perhaps some folks who are, you know, watching, tuning into this hearing for the first time, this is a continuation of our hearing from November 7th. And as a very brief summary, the applicant is before the board and requires a special permit for the construction of an additional building, more than one building, a lot; a special permit for the expansion or alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming use; a special permit for construction in the Water Resource District; and a special permit for construction within the Flood Plane District. And those, all four of those permits will be heard by this board. So, in a nutshell, that sort of summarizes, without going through the entire legal ad, what's going on here. So, all those in favor of waiving?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed, none. Okay, I'd like to introduce the members for tonight's hearing. Dave Twist, Sharon Freeman, Paul Schillen, Dave Kapnis, and I'm the chairman, Jeff Moore. Sean Dean is not here tonight. He should be expected to be here, should we continue next time. If we vote tonight, Sharon will be filling in and voting in his place. If we continue, it would be up to Sean whether he uses the Mullen Rule or deduces this hearing or not. So, we'll see how that plays out, but if we vote tonight, it will be the five of us voting, okay? Does that make sense? So, I guess what we'd like to do, could I read some correspondence in and catch up from some business from last time? We have a bunch of exhibits we'd like to read into the record. For example, could we get rid of some of that business before we get into some of the details? All right?
Absolutely.
Not to bore everybody. So, we had a number of exhibits that were presented to the board last time, specifically about 27 different exhibits, which Patty has kindly marked, and we wanna read that into the record. So Sharon, if you wouldn't mind going through and taking care of that, then those will go.
Exhibits and regular flood plane special permit application. Exhibit 1 marked as sheet EX-1 Flood Plane dated 10/6/17 by Richard Barthamas. Barthamas, Registered Professional Engineer of Lynnfield Engineering Incorporated, 2 Electronics Avenue, Suite 41, Denver, Mass. 01923, I read it verbatim, I'm cracked.
Okay.
Exhibit number 2 marked as sheet EX-2 Town of Georgetown Flood Plane zoning map dated May 1, 1980. Exhibit number 3 marked as sheet EX-3 Firm, is that a misspelled? Firm Flood Insurance Map Essex County dated, pardon me?
FEMA.
FEMA Flood Insurance, that would make sense. FEMA Flood Insurance, that's okay. I'm not quick on my feet. FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Map Essex County dated July 2, 2012. Exhibit number 4 marked as sheet EX-4 Compensatory Storage Plan dated 10/6/17 by Richard Barthamas, Registered Professional Engineer of Lynnfield Engineering Incorporated. Exhibit number 5 marked as sheet C-1 Boundary Retrasment Plan Georgetown Landfill Signed and Dated 4/14/1998 by PLS John W. McGern.
McEckern.
Thank you. Exhibit number 6 marked as sheet C-2 Existing Conditions Plan dated 10/6/17, Stampton Signed, Richard Barthamas, Registered Professional Engineer Lynnfield Engineering Incorporated. Exhibit number 7 marked as sheet C-3 Site Layout Plan dated 10/6/17, Stampton Signed by Richard Barthamas, Registered Professional Engineer, et cetera. Exhibit 8 Proposed Flood Floor Plan Building Area 7,600 square feet dated 7/17/17, drawn by RKB Architects Zero Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Massachusetts, 02184. Exhibit number 9 Proposed Front and Side Elevations dated 7/17/17, drawn by RKB Architects Zero Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Massachusetts, 02184. Exhibit number 10 Proposed Rear Side and Side Elevations dated 7/17/17 by RKB Architects Zero Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Massachusetts. Exhibits received 11/20/17 to the ZBA Office are as follows. Exhibit number 11 The Traffic Report Prepared by Bayside Engineering Dated 3/29/2017. Exhibit number 12 The Traffic Report Supplement Prepared by Bayside Engineering Dated 8/14/2017. Exhibit number 13 The State MEMA Environmental, thank you, Notification Form Dated 6/9/17. Exhibit number 14 Letter to Building Inspector Nonconforming Status Dated 12/14/2017. Exhibits received on January 22, 2018 are as follows. Exhibit number 15 Epsilon Associates Incorporated Sound Study to Lynnfield Engineering Dated 1/17/2018. Exhibit number 16-1 and 16-2 Brigade Electronics Incorporated Backup Alarm System, there are two items. Exhibit number 17 The NCM Odor Control Dated November 13, 2017 to Lynnfield Engineering. Exhibit received on January 23, 2018. Exhibit number 18 Letter from Building Inspector Dated January 23, 2018 Response to Nonconforming Status. And finally, happily, Exhibits 19 through 27 were new correspondence and have already been read into the record on November 7, 2017, and this is just to mark the exhibit numbers. Am I done?
Very good. Thank you very much, Sharon.
Good job.
Those people.
New opening line, have to do it.
Yep.
Glad you can do that while we're waiting. Go ahead and the hearing, right?
We need to do that for the 40B, 'cause we didn't do it then either.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
So, last met in November, right? Yeah, I almost said December, 'cause it seems like it was quite a while ago. And the applicant presented a summary of the project. We discussed several things, talked about concerns from the audience and a few other things. So, for those in the audience, again, that may be here for the first time, and those who are returning from last time, you will be given the opportunity to speak here tonight. We have the order that we're gonna go through here, just sort of for everybody's benefit, is we're gonna discuss kind of where we left off with the applicant, let them continue to present some information to us, particularly some of the information that we had asked for last time, and some supplement information, anything new that has maybe come up. There's a couple of new correspondences that we wanna get to, and then we will get to audience participation. If you have anything you'd like to say and contribute to the hearing, you'll be given the opportunity to do that, and then we'll move on from there with questions of the board and so on. So, I guess with no further ado, would you guys like to kind of give us a summary of where we are and?
And where we've been since November 7.
Exactly, it's been a while since.
It has been a little while since we first appeared before you on November 7th, and we did make a full presentation to you then of this proposal, which is simply an upgrading and improvement of the existing transfer station at 203 East Main Street. With me tonight is Jason Mello, the proponent applicant. Also with me is Rick Barthamas, who is the project engineer, Ken Cram, who is the project traffic engineer, and Ryan Callahan with Epsilon, the project noise control, noise engineer and consultant. This project, as we outlined to you at the last meeting, comes about, as you know, the transfer station operates under a DEP permit. That 10-year permit was issued in 2008 and is up for renewal. And we started about a year and a half ago, meeting with Rick, project engineer, and Jason met with DEP on a number of occasions, determining what DEP will be looking for to bring this existing transfer station into compliance with new regulations. And part of that is an upgrading of the facility, which includes an enclosure of the existing transfer station, which is certainly an improvement over existing conditions. This is also an opportunity to look at and improve existing conditions, some of which we heard about the last meeting, traffic concerns, noise concerns, and other issues we can address now in this new proposal that we have before you to truly upgrade the facility. The transfer station, as we discussed at the last meeting, does provide a significant benefit to the town by providing appropriate disposal of waste, which is certainly needed. The Mellow Company has, in addition to operating the transfer station as a responsible operator, also provides many benefits to the town outside of just the transfer station operations itself, which we can go into some more detail, and we certainly will. But the overall improvements that we're proposing, we think, are certainly a benefit to the community. As part of this process, Jason has met with, and with various of the consultants and myself, has met with the selectmen a number of times. He's met with the town administrator, DEP, as I mentioned, as well as the Board of Health. The upgrading of the facility that's before you tonight was approved by the Board of Health this past summer. Since the last meeting, and we did take many notes during the last hearing, we've been very busy, as the list of exhibits indicates. We have addressed, through a memo that was submitted to the building inspector in his response, the issue regarding the nonconforming use. You had asked for confirmation from the building inspector that, in fact, the existing use on the site is a pre-existing nonconforming use, and he has provided you with that confirmation. We have also submitted to you the full traffic report prepared by Ken Cram, as well as the supplement to that traffic report, which was reviewed during the Board of Health process in the past summer. You have a noise report from Epsilon, which we'll discuss with you tonight, as well as an odor control report. We also submitted to you the MIPA certificate, which was issued in June of this past year, and goes into a good amount of detail from the state review process of this project and what the state looked at. And they issued the MIPA certificate, which that whole process took into consideration comments from the town. Various boards participated in that process, and you do have the MIPA certificate that was issued then, which is, I think, a significant document for you to have. So, what I'd like to do is just discuss briefly the nonconforming use status, because we discussed it at the last meeting. And then, I think this evening, we would like to focus primarily on traffic, as we had promised during the November meeting, to have a meeting that really addresses the traffic concerns. And then we also have our noise consultant and Rick consult to the odor report that was issued, so we can get to all of those items. But I'm anticipating, if the board wishes, that we spend a good portion of the time talking about traffic. And we have a lot of exhibits that will hopefully bring some of this to light and explain it to you as best as we can.
Good. If I can interrupt for just one second. When we get to the nonconforming issue, I think it is important the board maybe make that finding for the record that agrees with, you know, or not, with the building inspector, and we'll get that on record. Okay, so we'll pause when we get to that point, 'cause I'd like to put that issue to bed, or, 'cause if it's not, then we have, it's contained, a lot of the other things that are gonna happen, the permits that are required are contingent on it, so.
Okay.
If that's okay.
So, I guess I'll start with that.
Sure.
You do have in your package, and you read into the record, the determination, which was a supplemental determination, because really, the building inspector had previously determined in his original letter, which was included with the application, that the use of the property is a pre-existing nonconforming use. And we submitted, after reviewing the town's records and going through the extensive files in the building inspector's office with regard to the operation of this property, as well as town meeting records, we submitted a report dated December 14th to the building inspector outlining that the operation of this facility started in 1952. The zoning bylaw was enacted in the town in October of 1954. The operation of this facility has been ongoing since 1952. As a dump, as defined under your zoning bylaw when it was adopted in 1954, and as it is still currently defined under the zoning bylaw, that definition has not changed since That information, again, I met with the building inspector, went through the files, I provided him with all of that information, and he has made a determination dated January 23rd of this year, that, again, the operation was, the facility was commenced in 1952, and that this facility is, as a current use, is a pre-existing nonconforming use. That is fairly straightforward, so I'd be happy to answer.
So, did everybody have the chance to read that when it came through? I know Patty sent it by email and distributed it. And then Les followed up, more than a month later, he followed up in January with his memo confirming. I do wanna say, I think that was a very extensive research. I know that wasn't easy. I spoke with Les several times through the course of this, trying to figure out.
It's a little dusty.
Yeah. And records are a little bit sketchy sometimes. So, you know, I personally appreciate the effort that went into trying to resolve this, and I think you did quite a good job doing that, and obviously, Les agrees. So, with that said, if there's any discussion on this, I'd like for the record to make a finding, if somebody would like to make a motion that we find that the 203 East Main Street is a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we make a decision on that, we'd like to speak to that issue.
That's fine, actually, fair enough. If you'd like to state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Peter O'Grain, and I'm a civil engineer, and I work out of an office in, at 603 Salem Street in Wakefield, Massachusetts, and I'm here representing Philip O'Grain, who also happens to be lucky enough to be my brother. We looked at the decision that was, first of all, the information that was submitted by counsel to the building inspector, and also the decision of the building inspector, and didn't come up with quite the same conclusion. We don't disagree that what was out there back in 1952 was a dump under the definition of the 1954 zoning. And in fact, that was described as a lot of land or pot thereof which is used for the disposal by abandonment, dumping, burial, burning, or other means, and for whatever purpose of garbage, sewage, trash, refuse, junk, discarded machinery, vehicles, and pots thereof, or waste material of any kind. That was a definition of a municipal dump that existed at the time. That's not the use that's out there today. You heard counsel, in her initial presentation, refer to what's there as a transfer station, not a dump, a transfer station. And we believe that's what's there. We believe it's either a transfer station or a recycling station, and it's a commercial operation. What was there in 1952 and in 1954, when the zoning was enacted, was only for the municipal use. It's now a commercial operation that's out there now. My brother built his house in 1997, and he has seen the operation grow and grow and grow since that time. And so, it's our contention that while it's been an existing use, in some type of use since 1952, it's a substantially, significantly different use than occurred in 1952 when it started, or 1954 when the zoning was first adopted. And I think that the board needs to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Fair enough. Appreciate your comment. And so, concern basically is that a transfer station is not the same thing as a dump in terms of use.
And I think under the bylaw, it is exactly the same thing, under the definition.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that Les did approach that, although I absolutely appreciate your comment. Les did approach that, and the definition for the use in the zoning bylaw is, in fact, one and the same. I don't actually have it right here in front of me, if you take, is it? Les had already addressed this, and I...
Well, you say he had already addressed it. I don't believe what they do is the disposal by abandonment and burying out there, which is the definition.
True.
True, but in his definition of what the use is today, he referred to the bylaw, which... Hang on just a moment.
The bylaw says disposal by abandonment, dumping, burial, burning, or any other means.
Thank you.
And for whatever purpose.
Yeah, and I wish Les was here. I know that he looked at the use carefully and concurred that the use of a dump, the use of a transfer station constitutes continuation of the use of a dump. The question at hand was, how long ago did this occur, and did it in fact predate zoning? That's the issue that we were left with, I believe, last weekend.
Right.
Please, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that is correct, and the state also recognizes that a transfer station is a continuation of a dump facility. So, we did have lengthy discussions about this, both at the meeting the last time and when I was reviewing this information with Les. And the definition is broad under your bylaw, and it encompasses this use, and it is the same use.
I was also looking at the schedule of uses, which is what we have to fall back on as well.
I think it's also a fairly common evolution of dumps in state, in the country.
That is.
They're all transfer stations now. There aren't any dumps left. Maybe there are, but they're not around here. So, you'd almost have to, I'm sure, there's precedent there where the definition of a dump has evolved to a transfer station, where things are dumped and then they're moved somewhere else.
Right. And that's also reflected in the cases that fall under 48, Section 6, as far as what a nonconforming use is, and an evolution of that use to bring things up to current standards is absolutely acceptable and is not considered an alteration.
If I'm not mistaken, we're getting away from burying this stuff, more so burning it, or recycling some of it.
Consolidating it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, your very thoughtful comment is taken for the record. I guess we do need to move on beyond this point before we move ahead, so, is anybody... I think it is important that the board do make this finding for the record. It is the basis for the other special permits that are gonna be before, so. Any discussion on that before?
No.
Would somebody like to make a motion to that?
We can make a motion to that. I'd like to make a motion that the 203 East Main Street location falls in within the determination that it is, the current use is a pre-existing nonconforming.
Did the board make a finding?
Board made a finding on that.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
So, any further discussion on that? Okay, I agree that this, that the history here is not perfectly clear and clean. There was a lot of work that had to go in to get to this determination, but I do think clearly it's been used for a dump of very similar progression continuously to predate zoning. So, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, just for the record, so. Dave?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the chairman agrees as well, so, go ahead and make that finding, okay?
Thank you. So, I think what we would like to do is move on to traffic, and have our traffic engineer present to you his report, and is there any questions that you might have?
Very good.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Ken Cram. I am with Bayside Engineering. I am a Registered Professional Traffic Engineer in Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I've been doing this for way too many years, so, just wanna put that on the record. Let's see, let's see, first dated August 14, and March 29. We were brought on almost a year ago, excuse me, to look at the traffic impacts from the expansion of this proposed facility, and I don't mean to block the audience view, but I have a bunch of charts. facility, which is shared right now with the Georgetown Department of Public Works in terms of the access. You come into the site, and you pass through, and if you're bringing materials to the transfer facility, you go over a scale. If you're a truck or bringing materials that are being processed, dump them, go back over to scale, you give them a bill, and you go on your merry little way. If you're a resident who has access to the facility for dumping off recycling materials and so forth, you come in, circulate on the site. The bins over here are in the north...
West.
West, thank you, corner of the site, and that's what happens there. And what happens is, you have a lot of activity that happens, you know, between, not pedestrian cars, patrons of the facility circulating with activity on the site. And so this is also a good opportunity with this increase to help clean it up and clean up that flow, and we'll get into that further on into my presentation. But we performed a standard traffic study. The original one was dated March 29th, 2017, and we looked at primarily the site access, which is the intersection with 133 East Main Street. 133 in this stretch is a state-numbered, but it's town-owned and maintained roadway. So, and all these numbers that I'm gonna give you are in one or two of the reports. I just tried to put them up here for, to show you what we did and how they compare, which was an interesting comparison. But originally, we did our traffic counts initially in January of 2017 for the Port of Health report. They were done from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, 3:00 to 6:30, and then eventually, we also did counts on Saturday. And we found that the morning peak hour generally occurred from 7:00 to 8:00 generally. The evening peak hour, the commuter peak hour, when the volumes were the heaviest, was around 5:00 to 6:00, and then on Saturday, it was about 10:15 to 11:15 in the morning. That was, those were the peak hours. As part of the Port of Health process, one of my peers was asked to do a review for the Port of Health, and at that time, they suggested that we get summertime counts as well, because there's a lot more activity that happens at the station because of all the leaf clippings and grass and so forth that gets dumped and treated as well. So we did counts in July 2017, again, the same two-hour period in the morning, two-and-a-half-hour period in the afternoon, and the period in the morning, because the facility closes at noon, so there was no point in counting past noon because it was closed. And what we found was kind of an interesting phenomenon. Of course, you know, during the evening peak hour, you know, little or no traffic was going in or out because the facility was closed already. It closes at 3:00 on a weekday, but there is, you know, DPW, they have trucks and employees coming back and forth and going in and out. But the, what we found in the summertime, the actual counts on East Main Street were lower than they were in January. That was the counts that are just passing through on East Main Street. But the volume of traffic going in and out of the facility was comparable, and that's something we thought we would expect based on the nature of the facility. Of course, we also did, we called out an automatic traffic recorder. We put that out on Route 133 to find out how much traffic is on Route 133, and because that count was done in January, January, based on available mass DOT traffic count data, January volumes are typically a little bit lower, they're about 14% lower than average. So we multiplied them up by a factor of about 1.14 to get them to become an average month volume. And so we have about almost 21,000 cars a day on this section of East Main Street, and that kinda like makes sense because it's the major route into and out of Georgetown, as well as Groveland and further to the east, Haverhill, West Haverhill. So, and we have about 1,650 cars in the morning peak hour, about 1,510 cars on East Main Street during the evening commuter peak hour. As part of our study, and I'll get into this in a little bit, but we assess site distances at the driveway as well. So what we do with our automatic traffic recorder is we can also get the speed of vehicles on Route 133, and the posted speed limit in this area is 35 miles per hour. The average speed in both directions was found to be 38 miles per hour, and the median percentile speed was 42 miles per hour. So there is a, there's a conundrum of speeding that currently happens on that section of We also looked at crash experience as a requirement under mass DOT guidelines. We look at the last five years, which mass DOT has available data. At that point, they had only, I think, one crash, so they asked us to get the local crash data from Chief Cuddenmore, which we did, and we evaluated that, and there were only two crashes that occurred at the driveway over the last, most recent five-year period, and both of those were rear-end collisions. So in terms of overall safety, that gives us a feeling that two crashes over five years is not a significant finding, and based on mass DOT's calculation, that bore that out. So we have our existing conditions. We look at a future year condition. Again, mass DOT, we look at a seven-year planning horizon, so we went from 2017 to 2024, excuse me. And what we do is we look for available count data to give us some support there. We talked to the local planning agency, in this case, we talked with both the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the Merrimack Valley Regional Planning Council, and based on their data, they said that the growth is about a half a percent per year. But we also talked with the Newtown planner, his name slips my mind, but we had worked together in the past, and at the time, when we were doing our traffic study, there was only one project on the books at that time, and that was the inclusion of a Domino's Pizza until the little Georgetown Plaza, which is just to our west on 133. So we got their traffic study, and we included their volumes for their projections into our background projections to develop our future no-build conditions. Next thing we do is we wanna know what is our increase in tonnage going to generate? Normally, what we would do, and all these charts and numbers are in the reports, we, traffic engineers, we have what we call the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, and it compiles characteristics of various types of land uses, and we can go into it and we can say, okay, if we have 200,000 square foot new shopping center, they will say, okay, it'll generate X, Y, and Z for trips. So we usually rely on that when local empirical data is not available. However, they do not have yet, and even in the new trip generation manual, which just came out last November or December 2017, trash transfer facilities of this like and nature are not, they have no data for them. So we have to base our projections on industry operations pretty much for how they happen today. And basically, what happens is, right now, we have a lot of vehicles coming into and out of the site over the course of a day and during the peak hours, but these are mostly smaller vehicles, and I've got some charts, which I'll show you in a minute, which show that most of the vehicles that are coming to and from the site are pickup trucks or automobiles. We do not have a lot of, currently, right now, we may have one or two 18-wheelers, semi-transportation, semi-tractor trucks, I'm sorry, that come into and out of the site. But what we have is, we have the material that comes onto the site, and we believe that's gonna come to the site in the future in terms of either roll-off containers, small commercial vehicles, or your typical packer trucks, which are your garbage trucks, pretty much. And basically, the way it works out is for our 250 ton per day increase, these vehicles have a certain capacity. You break the capacity down, divide that into what's gonna be possibly processed on a day, and that gives you the number of trucks that we would expect coming to and from the site. And then, of course, we have the transfer trailer, which is the big truck that takes everything once it's sorted and classified and so forth, off of the site. We've used this procedure many projects. I've worked with Rick on at least half a dozen projects over the years, where this has been the standard practice for developing the traffic projections. So although there are a lot of pickup trucks and small vehicles, and maybe some what we call SU30s or single unit trucks coming to the site, that may continue to happen, but we looked at the addition of what we believe will be the future operation of the site will happen. It's not, even though there is going to be 15 to 300, it is six times, it's not gonna be a six-time increase of volumes that are currently there today, because it simply just, if that happened, Mr. Mello would be pretty happy because he's getting a lot of stuff to take care of, but it just, it would exceed the possible capacity of the site. So the volume of traffic really is gonna be relatively small overall, you know, trucks during the peak hours and for the rest of the day. It'll be spread out from 7:00 to 3:00. So we take those numbers, and we looked at the existing temporal distribution to come up with the number of new trips per day. Now, keep in mind, a trip, divide that in half to the total number of cars or vehicles, it'll be cut in half. So the 62 vehicles that we generated become 126 trips, which is a total across the day. There would be eight additional cars or trucks coming in or out, nothing during the commuter peak hour because the facility is closed. And then on Saturday, there won't be anything either on Saturday. However, we also looked at, as part of the Port of Health review, they asked us to look at, okay, what happens when the facility has its peak, which in this case is generally that one hour just before closing, between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock, 1:45 to 2:45 roughly, when everyone is rushing to get there before they're closed, so they dump off their recycling, dump their trash, whatever it is. And again, there would be about eight cars or trucks coming in and out during that period over the course of the entire hour. And... Here's some charts, just by comparison, so I can see the increases. And this, these just show currently, and we went through, backing up, looking at, the way we do traffic counts these days is by video. We, there's a firm that we use, and they go out and they put out video cameras. They're not, they're, they're not high-def cameras. All they can do is enough to see the car. They can't read license plates, they can't see what a person's doing inside the car, so don't be alarmed. But the firm that developed the software can read those videos, and they actually count the cars for us. Well, I had a young engineer actually sit and watch all of the videos, so we could actually see what types of vehicles. That was 31 hours worth of labor. Thanks, Jason. And so she watched, and she recorded every single truck, whether it was a pickup truck, a pickup truck with a trailer, an oversized pickup truck, two axles on the rear, panel trucks, semi-trucks, trash trucks, and for the weekday morning in January, this, these volumes represent the total cars in and out of the site, and these also include DPW traffic, keep that in mind. So you can see pickup trucks are far on the left here, and automobiles next to the very end, and the very end is the total. So it's very small, the total number of trucks right now that are coming to the site. What was interesting was when you looked at the Saturday peak hour. And this is where your influx, again, large number of trucks, 83 pickup trucks, 110 automobiles, total coming in and out was 201. Of course, the 110 automobiles, they're, I would hazard a bet that almost all of them are dumping off recyclables or their own trash for the facility. And the volumes are comparable, again, we have all of them here. This is to show, this is the July peak hour of the commuter traffic. Again, nothing coming into and out of the site. And here, just by comparison, is the Saturday in July. Again, very close to what we had for the Saturday in January, 106 cars, 70 trucks, 189 total vehicles.
Can I stop you for a second? The chart on your right that you're flipping right now is the build condition...
Correct.
With the expansion.
Right.
Okay, can you show that again so that they understand what we're looking at? On the left is existing conditions, and on the right, so let's go through and go through each of those pages again so we can see a true comparison of existing conditions versus the build that we're proposing.
I haven't gotten that for you, but...
Okay. I wanted to be sure we were understanding what the charts were, and I don't think we were clear on that.
And then lastly, by comparison, I've got side-by-side here, this is the weekday morning peak hour in January, using the January volumes, not necessarily in January, but using the January volumes, and here are the January volumes with the expansion. As we can see, we got, we go from 53 to 61, so that's eight additional vehicles.
The total daily volume or hourly?
This is hourly, these are just peak hours.
Everything's peak hours?
Everything's peak hour.
Morning? Morning peak?
Morning peak, evening peak, Saturday peak. And we also have the peak hours of the generators. So for every peak, based on the way the numbers and temporal distribution of the existing traffic worked out, it was pretty much an even distribution throughout the course of the day of how our assignments came out. So basically, those 126 trips we talked about for the total, they're pretty much broken down almost evenly, roughly, anywhere from like 8:00 to 10:00 in or out over the course of the day. So eight cars coming in at 8:00 to 9:00, eight cars, trucks coming in 9:00 to 10:00, and so forth.
Okay.
And of course, we had, as, we had our, all our numbers, we looked at, we do our intersection capacity analyses. Again, we have, the Transportation Research Board publishes the High Capacity Manual. The current version is the 2010 High Capacity Manual. So we ran all our numbers through using the unsignalized intersection capacity analysis because it is an unsignalized intersection, and we found that overall, the model indicated that the exiting vehicles in the morning and during Saturday experienced a level service F through existing no-build and build conditions, and it's a D during the weekday evening peak hour. These are the commuter peak hour numbers. The overall volume-to-capacity ratio was, however, less than one in all cases, indicating that even though you have a level service F calculated, it's less than capacity still with the project. So, and then we went on...
Can you repeat that again, please?
Yeah.
One more time.
Even though the calculated level of service... Even though the calculated level of service delay number, the Unsignaled Intersection Capacity Analysis is very conservative. I've done numerous studies at the same time, and we're actually starting to do it more and more now, at the same time as we do our accounts, we actually measure the delays of the vehicles exiting a side street, for instance. And I found, you know, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, the actual measured delays are significantly lower than the actual calculated delays. Unfortunately, I was hoping back in 2008, 2009, when we knew the new capacity manual was coming out, that they would change that methodology, the way they calculated, but they didn't do it. The 2010 manual for Unsignaled, exactly the same as the, was it 2000? Two thousand capacity manual. Absolutely no change. And I, as a traffic engineer, I, I can't tell you why they did that.
We talked about delay times. Sorry to interrupt.
Delay times.
Are you talking about exit delay?
Exit delay, right.
You're not talking about entrance delay?
Not talking about entrance delay.
Did you study entrance delay?
It is, it, that was one of the questions asked by the Board of Health, and we did put it in with the Board of Health findings. And that calculated delay on average, keep in mind, these are averages over the course of an hour, was, let's see, in January, these are existing numbers, the left turnion was, the average delay was eleven seconds or less.
Weekday morning peak?
Weekday morning, Saturday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday, correct.
I was just talking about weekday morning.
Weekday morning, the calculated delay, left turn and movements from East Main Street during the commuter peak hour was nine point two seconds.
And by delay means that car has stopped and been stationary for nine point two seconds on that?
Right, but keep in mind, that's an average.
On average.
You could have, you know, three cars, there's a big enough gap that you shoot right across, zero delay. You could have a car that has thirty seconds of delay because he's waiting for a gap in the oncoming car. But keep in mind, they deal in averages over the course of an hour. The next thing, in terms of the Board of Health, we had looked at it, we didn't do any in the original report, but the Board of Health asked us to take a look at it. We went out and actually looked at the intersection site distance for the vehicles exiting the facility. In other words, a car coming up the driveway and then has to make a left or a right turn and wants your view. So originally, I'd said, we measured the speeds and we found the eighty-fifth percentile speed to be forty-two miles per hour. So that's seven miles per hour higher than the posted speed limit. So that's what we put into our formula. The American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, ASHTO for short, has developed a model to actually calculate what is necessary for stopping site distance. And so what we did is, we looked, and it's, we looked at both the automobile site distance and because we have trucks, the truck site distance. Basically, a truck, as we all know, it's a heavier vehicle, takes a little longer time for it to start up and get going. So basically, the ASHTO, based on the forty-two miles per hour speed for stopping site distance, you need three hundred and twelve feet. And it's the same for a truck. What's different is the truck needs a little bit longer distance for its intersection site distance because that truck is pulling out into the traffic stream, and the general rule of thumb twenty years ago was, you want to be able to pull out into that traffic stream without causing the traffic stream to have to slow down to seventy percent of the speed they were going at originally. So basically, we found we had almost six hundred feet of site distance when you're looking to the west, which is... This picture here. That is the east, yes. And we had, we measured four hundred and forty-three looking to the east. So we meet the ASHTO requirements. There was some concern that this shrubbery here, and this photo was taken obviously in the summertime when all the leaves are fully, all the trees and brush are fully in bloom, so to speak. And you can clearly see, taken from this point here, which is about fourteen and a half feet back from the edge of travelway, which is ASHTO requirements, we have adequate sightlines for the driveway. So that's in a nutshell. Oh, no, I forgot one thing. We talked at the very beginning... This graphic was just put together real quick to show, basically, you know, cars and trucks come in right now into the site, and you go over to scale and you go into the existing facility to dump the materials. If you are a resident and you want to get to the bins, you'll come in here, circulate around here, park in this general area. I stopped by there again a couple mornings ago, and people didn't necessarily just park here, they just, they parked here, there were people parking over here, kind of like willy-nilly. So Mr. Bothamis, his newfound traffic engineering wisdom, came up with a plan where we separate the two areas of activity on the site. Coming in, residents will now go to the right, circulate through this loop here, there'll be new compactors up here for the recyclable materials, new compactors down here for municipal solid waste, and the vehicles just come in here and queue up and wait if there's another five parking spaces are available. During peak periods, we anticipate probably having to have an attendant just to help and make sure the flow goes well. And then they circulate out and exit the site without having to ever enter upon the new facility and interfere with any of the operations of whether it be a truck or the load or moving materials. So I think that covers my presentation.
Do you want any of these graphics passed around so that you can see them more closely?
That would be...
See in the traffic?
Fine, they're a little large to be passing on the table, but...
This one in particular, I think, because really, part of the upgrading of this facility is not only to bring us up to current regulations with regard to the facility itself, but also to address what we've heard are issues and what we know are issues, which is the current traffic circulation on the site. And those two sheets that Ken just showed you really demonstrate that.
Yeah, that was not the, the same as what's in our original packet, right?
Right, yeah. This, I just created this yesterday.
You got one that was done by Rick, our engineer, and one that was done by our traffic engineer.
Yeah.
And that maybe gives you a better feel, and so maybe, Ken, you might want to pass that around so that it can be seen a little better.
It's not in the traffic study that was submitted?
No, no.
This is an exhibit for, for presentation purposes for tonight.
We should have gone.
Does anybody have any questions about the data that's been presented or how it was analyzed or...
It would be helpful if you could just, for me, anyway, if everyone agrees, when you were showing the, the bar graph of existing and build-out, what I'd like to know is a side-by-side, existing is this, the build-out is this?
Right.
For trucks, for cars. But I couldn't quite capture that.
I think you've, you've got both of those.
I think it's all there. I just need it side-by-side.
Side-by-side.
I mean, spoken, spoken.
And maybe we can, we can pull it over because you're kind of leaning over a little bit. It might be easier for you to see.
You can, you can speak it. I'm just trying to understand what it is. Trucks today, trucks build-out, cars today, cars build-out.
As Ken is getting set up, he has done a lot of analysis, and what he's given you tonight is some technical information as to how that analysis comes about.
Yep.
But what I think it would be important, and I think what you're asking for, is a summary for someone who is not a traffic engineer like me, it, how does, how does it compare? What are the actual numbers?
Actual to...
Apples to apples. Exactly.
Projected.
The existing versus the, the build.
Yeah, I think that's what I was looking for.
Can you see?
I think if it were just spoken, that will help me. I'm just need a...
It's hard to read from here.
Yeah, these graphics are really good, so it would be helpful if you could see them.
Oh, yeah, it's all good. That's fine.
And what it shows, excuse me, I'm going to stand in front of you guys, sorry. Pickup trucks, pickup trucks with trailers, oversized pickup truck, oversized pickup truck with trailer, oversized panel truck, roll-off, dump truck, dump truck with trailer, fuel truck, semi-truck, trash truck, front-end loader.
Yeah.
Automobiles, and then the total.
And that's today?
That was the...
Existing.
Existing in July.
Can you give me the...
That's summer.
Far left, far right, what those numbers are?
And then fourteen...
Fourteen.
Two.
I don't need all of them, just fourteen and the biggest, two bars in the...
Nineteen, the total is forty-seven.
That's summer.
That was July morning and summer.
By hour.
In one hour.
In one hour, right?
In one hour.
In one hour. So fourteen is large trucks, right?
Fourteen, no, that was just regular pickup trucks.
And nineteen is cars.
Nineteen was cars.
And your build-out is what?
We're going to have, we predict fourteen more pickup trucks.
So twenty-eight.
Still the same number.
Fourteen, no, fourteen.
Same, no, no difference.
No change there. Same number of automobiles during the morning peak hour. But what's different is our panel trucks or commercial trucks go up by three. The roll-off trucks go up by three. And we have one tractor-trailer, and we have one packer truck.
And seven years out is your build-out, right?
Correct, just right.
And you're assuming no increase in pickup trucks and cars over the seven years in an hour?
Because...
I believe your formulas, I'm not an engineer, but I'm shocked.
It's not a formula, it's based on, we, we did counts in January and July.
Right.
And the volume of traffic turning left, right, into the site, left, right, out of the site.
Yep.
In January, was almost the exact same as it was in July.
No, I understand that, but isn't the one on the right seven years from now?
No, this is just, this is a comparison to show you, because, you know, the volume of traffic coming in from now to the site is not going to really change over what it's, because it hasn't changed in, within change in six months. But it's not really going, that's not going to change over time. What's going to change over time is the...
The distribution.
On Route 133, that traffic going out of town will probably change over time. As, as more growth happens in town, I understand there's a 40B project at 34 East Main Street, for instance. That could have some impact on the through traffic on East Main Street, but not necessarily going to change the number of pickup trucks that come to the site dropping off materials.
So you're saying that in seven years, you don't expect any increase in pickup trucks?
With the build, with the build-out.
With the build-out.
With the build-out, correct.
Does that seem...
Because it's not going to...
I think you're exactly right.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying.
What you're saying, based on the numbers, it's about point eight-two cars.
You're right.
Per...
Yeah, we're not going to...
It's okay, if that's, I'm surprised.
It's a sixty-minute window, right?
Correct.
So it's almost every...
Minute.
One minute and a half, minute and twenty-two seconds, if you will, there's a car pulling in or a truck pulling in or that.
Or out, correct.
Correct.
These are total, these are now.
This one goes to about, almost one and a half.
Right.
Okay. And so if I understand correctly, we're at about minute and a quarter, minute twenty-five, and that's a minute and fifty, and you're saying over that increase, that's all we're going to see, in an increase?
In an increase, for, for this, for our site alone. Keep in mind, I don't need to cut it out, but getting back to the nature of the beast, so to say, what we have now is a lot of small trucks bringing materials to be transferred. That could actually go down, theoretically speaking. You think about it, you know, if all these, you know, these smaller contractors that are bringing the materials, if they contract with another company or with Mello to bring their materials, that could happen. And therefore, then, your packer truck, which went up by one, could be that one packer truck. It's, it's, it's not an exact science because, I mean, but this is the way we do it, and this is what we've seen at these facilities that we've analyzed, and we've done other studies for over the past twenty years.
I think also the, the difference is, it's the increase in the commercial activities, the increase in the roll-offs, and the increase on the, on the dump trucks is where the tonnage is going to be occurring, not, not with each little pickup truck. So that was, that shows right there, there's roll-offs, that's gone double in, in quantity in the seven years out. That's where the tonnage is increasing.
I know, I was just going to do more on the traffic side.
Well, absolutely, that's what they're saying, is that the traffic's not going to be as impacted, but the, the type of vehicles going in will, will change.
Right, because the capacity changes, like, yeah, I understand that.
That's why we wanted to have these graphics, because the traffic reports that we submitted do indicate what you would normally think of as a lower-than-expected increase, but here's why. It's, it's a different type of vehicle that's coming in.
Can I ask you a question about the data that was collected for January? Was there a police officer on detail at the corner of Elm Street and 133 at the time that the data was collected at the, during the peak?
Interesting question.
I do not know.
This is, this is what we, this is what we deal with every day in Georgetown, so every, at least...
Elm Street, north of...
Elm Street is the middle school.
Yeah.
The traffic is so bad during the peak hours, there are people getting in and out, they have to put a police officer there, okay? And the reason I ask that is it dramatically impacts the flow of traffic coming by that site, particularly going eastbound. It comes in big chunks, because he holds it back, lets people go in and out, and then lets everybody go. And that, that traffic will back all the way up. Say that the eastbound traffic on 133 during the peak hours in the morning will back up all the way to Dunkin' Donuts, Johnny's, regularly, maybe, maybe further, all the way to the light to the high school, I think, actually.
Because then you have the light at the high school, so...
And then he's letting this, this flow of traffic out.
When you come out, there's a...
Well, that helps us.
May or may not. I just want to know if the data that was collected included, included that, because it...
If that's a normal occurrence, then that would have been included.
And what was the date of the, the January study? I mean, what year were we talking about? And for what period of time did you collect data, just to, I think it's in here, but...
So July wouldn't?
January 12th, 2017.
Yeah, it would, July would not be part of that.
And...
January 12th?
Yeah, that was the January count date, and...
What day of the week was that, Ken? You always do it on a certain day.
It was probably Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
So you counted for what period of time in January? How long, how many days?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine AM.
And it was, I believe it was seven to nine.
He wouldn't have been there at seven. He doesn't get there until...
But he's there for an hour when...
Right, eight to nine he would have been there.
Eight to nine, probably, yeah.
Let me just get the exact times. Seven to nine, two to six on, during the evening peak period, and then on Saturday, nine to noon.
And you, and the data was collected between what dates?
It was January 12th.
I'm sorry, it is in here, I know, but...
And January 12th, and what did I say? July 27th, which was a Thursday.
Oh, continuous for the full seven-month period?
Oh.
So...
Jason doesn't have that kind of memory.
Yeah, alright, so...
As it is, I'm getting, I'm losing time tomorrow because of what's coming tomorrow.
Day off.
So, um...
You may get a day off, but it hurts me.
Yeah.
So how long does it take for a fully-loaded, large vehicle, roll-off dumpster, uh, large trash truck, that wants to turn left? How long does it take in time for them to accelerate and clear that lane and safely enter the road?
There was a truck making a left turn in.
Sure, yeah.
Heading west.
How many seconds does it, does he need to...
I've never measured it, but I'd say five to seven.
So you're not sure?
No, I've not measured it.
So, um, and what was the average speed of the vehicles that were headed westbound on 133? You mentioned it earlier and I didn't see it.
It was, um, thirty-eight miles per hour was the average speed.
Thirty-eight miles per hour.
Speed limit's thirty-five, correct.
So thirty-eight is the average, go headed westbound out to, say, the highway.
Both directions.
This is, and this is peak?
This one, no, this is a total, combined total over the two-day period.
Okay.
But the key is the eighty-fifth percentile, which is forty-two miles per hour.
So I guess my question would be, so for a large, fully-loaded vehicle trying to turn left into the facility that is headed, say, west, and they wanna make that left-turn vehicle, the average speed of the vehicles are thirty-eight miles an hour. You have a thousand vehicles an hour roughly, now and in the future, coming at them in the peak morning.
Right.
My question is, how much distance do you need between those vehicles to safely make that turn, and how long is that wait time for those vehicles to turn left? The reason I ask is, I was there the other morning, and I waited by Dunkin' Donuts, and I waited, and I waited, I got through Elm Street, and we came through, and everybody went, and I see a truck, fully-loaded, or maybe it was empty, I don't know if it was loaded or not, it was a trash truck, waiting to turn left into that facility. And I went by, and I don't know how many cars were lined up behind there, waiting for him to make his left-hand turn. And it went all the way back close to Tenny Street, the vehicles that were backed up there, waiting for that one vehicle to make a left-hand turn. A lot of it may have had to do with this officer letting big chunks of traffic through and letting them go, because they're all backed up, and there is no opportunity there during the peak morning for them to get that gap, whatever that safe gap is, whatever that seven to nine seconds he needs, or whatever your estimate may be. And then if you have more than one vehicle in that lane waiting to turn left, I'm, what I'm getting at is, what is the inconvenience for people who are trying to get through town? And that's a very heavily residential area out there, Tenny Street, um, and the new development that's going in off of Tenny Street, and anybody coming to, trying to get to that school from that end of town, 'cause they're all trying to get to Elm Street so they can get their turn to go left into Elm Street, waiting for the officer to do his thing, okay? So I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, what's the average wait time for these vehicles? You got sixteen of them in the morning that are trying to turn left in the peak hour. Did you guys study that, or, I mean, is it an average wait time, but I guess I'm, I'm confused, 'cause it doesn't seem like there's much change here or much traffic congestion, but during certain hours, I can assure you that there, that there is, and...
Oh, yeah, there's...
I'm trying to understand how this data reflects the reality that we all live with here, so, I don't know if you can shed some light on, on that.
Well, no, you're absolutely right, there are, you know, I'll call them, uh, extenuating is not the right word I wanna use, can't come to mind right now, but outside influences definitely can influence, you know, in their intersections upstream and downstream. Um, and, you know, there's no doubt that occasionally there are these queues, they do build up, um, and the cars back up, but they appear generally quickly, from what I've observed, um, the times I've been out there in the morning and the evening peak periods. Um, and the volume of traffic that we're adding, although they may be trucks, they're, you know, the big delay, if anything, would occur on our site driveway, with them waiting to make a left turn or not.
And they're gonna make left, right.
And that is something that happens now, it happens now with DPW traffic, it's what we have for today. Those delays will probably increase marginally, but because of the volume of traffic being so small, it's gonna be added to it, those delays are also gonna go up marginally, as the analysis shows.
Yeah, and, and the delay, and those are, is customers' delays, which frankly, I'm not as concerned about as the other delays for people who are being impacted by this, not by their own choice.
Right. Well, it sounds like there's...
So, uh, you know, I, I understand that, and a lot of this is in and out, and a lot of the delay, that's why I asked you, you, you calculate delay time, but the exit delays, from my perspective, it's nice to know that, if you're gonna go, you know, drop your trash off, or you're in that business, fine, but from a town impact standpoint, and what's the detriment to the folks in the neighborhood, I'm not as concerned personally about that as I am about the tie-ups on, on, on 133, particularly during, during peak hours, and, and particularly in the morning. In the afternoon, um, it doesn't seem to be, and it had, may have a lot more to do with your hours of operation than anything else, there's certainly a heck of a lot of traffic coming in off the highway in the afternoon for anybody who comes during rush hour, 133, trying to get to the middle of town. And that traffic backs up regardless of anybody trying to turn left here, I mean, it's...
And that's probably why the facility's closed at three, four o'clock.
Yeah, but then again, turning left would be a piece of cake, 'cause no one's really coming the other way. But, um, you know, the reality is that in the morning, there's a lot going on in a very small area, and I'm just trying to understand, um, you know, the relevance of, uh, adding whatever it is from, you know, you're, you're projecting sixteen left-hand turns, for example, at the peak hour versus, say, twelve. All right, well, jeez, you know, that's only an increase of four, but that, you know, that's thirty-three percent increase in the number of people trying to turn left during the peak hour of the morning. If we're already waiting for a certain amount, that's why I'd like to know what the delay time would be. Now, all of a sudden, you got sixteen vehicles an hour, you got, uh, however many seconds that is, you know, every hour, you gotta get so many to turn left, and, uh, you know, to me, that's a lot. I mean, thirty-three percent more vehicles trying to turn left and tie up that traffic is, is not immaterial, I guess. But it looks like it, 'cause the numbers are small, but...
Well, that, that's why the increase looks so large, 'cause it is, the numbers existing are so small, and they're, they're going to...
The backups are real.
That's a real...
I guess is what I'm getting at.
Backups may be real, but they're created by something that we don't create.
Okay, a trash truck turning left on 133 at eight-thirty in the morning is not creating all that traffic behind it, waiting to get to school and to all the other places they need to get to.
The volume of traffic that's there, that's causing that, is, you know, traffic that's really, in effect, unfortunately, my experience, traffic that's coming through Georgetown to get to ninety-five.
Maybe, but they're still stuck behind a trash truck.
Or a car.
Yeah, when you came up with...
Behind a trash truck, trying to turn left. I mean, I, I'm, I'm only focusing on one little aspect of your data, I, I understand. I mean, I'm ignoring some of these other things. But as a resident who travels this road quite frequently in the mornings particularly, I'm very well aware of, and your data is, is very good, and on these, these schematics that you have are quite revealing, actually, because you've done a lot of work to indicate who's not just what's going by, but who's going where, right? Uh, you know, I don't know if you guys had a chance to, to kinda look at it, but, um, you know, there's no doubt that, particularly that, that westbound traffic is, is heavily impacted by, you know, because it's a single-lane road. If it was a two-lane road, you know, left-hand turn lane, even if it was a signal, it'd be a totally different story, I think.
Well, the...
I mean, people can get around a truck or whatever.
Volume of traffic is not large enough to warrant a signal, otherwise, Mr. Durkey would've had one installed by now, um, and the road is not wide enough to widen to put a left-turn lane in.
Correct.
Nor would I recommend it, because that only increases the speed, but that's my personal and profoundly personal opinion.
I'm just saying, that's what it is, because if somebody wants to turn left, backs up those, those vehicles in. So, um...
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So your study was peak hours, which were from, remind me again, from seven to nine, correct?
Seven to nine was the two-hour period you counted, correct?
Okay. I'm looking at the original data point here with all the numbers of all the cars. So seven to nine, obviously, we got almost seven hundred, five eighty-four, three ninety-nine. Then it drops off from three twenty-eight, three forty-five, three fifty-eight around noon time. Can you tell me how much of an impact that makes with the figures you were talking about with the wait times, and if, if the average wait time was nine seconds, are we ta, now talking two, or three, or four?
You would be talking less, uh, we don't have, because it's...
Correct.
The volume, the through, it's based on, the calculation is based on the volume of traffic that conflicts.
Correct.
And if there is no, because it's a, um, a formula for the delay, it's a parabola, so I, I can't tell you it's a straight line.
Don't ask me why, but remember that, but I do.
Is that because traffic queues up behind, they all stop, and then he goes, they don't all go once, they all have to, something like that, right?
I have no idea why.
What are you talking about? I mean, the impaction is, honestly, a trash truck turning, if they have to wait, it's a big deal, but everybody behind it who does, they're the ones that are impacted. So the wait time, as you say, they stop, and then everybody starts to queue, 'cause they're waiting, and then he goes, and everybody has to kinda get going again.
But to answer Mr. Twist's...
Yep, that's it.
Twist's question, it's, it's not a straight-line relationship, um, in terms of delay, and because, and we couldn't analyze it if we had counts at the driveways during those, those, that peak, say, a noon-time hour.
My, my point is to get to a, to another point, which is, you know, I don't know where we end up here, but maybe, um, you know, you see signs all the time at schools, no driving through from seven to noon, you know, eight, or whatever, uh, you know, maybe there's a restriction on those vehicles coming in between seven and nine, because if, and I've seen it, I'm not, I'm not, you're not alone, I've been driving down, and you know the quote, the nature of my job, I'm all over the place, I may go west, I may go east or north or south, it depends on my day, but I have driven down 133, and you see the trash truck, and I get it, he's got a job to do, there's, you know, good entrepreneurial spirit, and they're a good company, I, no complaints there, but this, unfortunately, the way the road was designed and what we have to work with, it does create a bottleneck that, you know, you hear a large amount of people, for lack of a better term, complain about and gripe about. Um, and I've seen, I mean, I've seen it with my own eyes, Jeff's seen it, I'm sure we've all seen it. So I don't know if a restriction, uh, only because I looked at these numbers, I read this, a lot of this report, I see these for a lot of the stuff I do, so, I noticed right away that, well, seven to nine, you're crazy to try to get in there anyway, because that's a, the second-largest, or it is the largest, other than when the three-to-five window, and five-to-six, maybe. So, I mean, I just wanted to get your perspective, if you had kind of a educated guess on how dramatic that wait time would be.
Uh, it would be less, I, I really couldn't say, because it's a, just a function of the, of the conflicting movements.
Okay.
The average, that, you came up with an average time for that, make that, make that left-hand turn, where, where did that data come from? Was it, was it the Wednesday and the Saturday combined? What hours of the day was it?
The hours we, we've talked about, we looked at the peak hour, uh, which is the four highest fifteen-minute interval, uh, when we counted, and we used that data, which, you know, said, okay, you, you have, you know, whatever the volume was, whatever the percent trucks was in that volume, uh, because those were counted, bicycles and pedestrians as well, um, and that goes into the model, which takes into other geometric characteristics, you know, the width of the road, for instance, and so forth, the, the geometry of the road, do you have a left-turn lane, do you have a right-turn lane, and so forth, and all that goes into the model.
My question is, is, did your average include Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. And Saturday, we don't really have that big of an issue with traffic. Not, the, the, you know, school's not happening, we don't have the backup.
Traffic on 133.
Right, exactly.
The problem with Saturday is...
I think Saturday kinda...
It's the small vehicles is the problem on Saturday, it's the homeowners. They, they get...
I would agree.
They get locked up.
I would agree, but we don't have the issue with, you know, with Elm Street.
Not the big ones coming out, maybe.
But I think that's skewed by including Saturday, 'cause I think Saturday decreases it.
Oh, there's, there's...
The time that they're gonna be taking that left-hand turn when they're heading west.
We analyzed three different peak hours separately. So you don't look, you don't say what we get on Saturdays is the same thing as you're gonna have on a weekday morning. We looked at them all individually.
Well, I don't, I didn't see them broken out individually.
They were in, uh, the report. If you look in the August fourteenth letter, response letter to the Board of Health comments, table five breaks it out, uh, where we look at weekday morning, weekday evening, Saturday midday, resisting no built-in build conditions for both, to me, the critical movement, which is the side street in this case, the driveway approach to the intersection, as well as the left turn for each of those individual peak hours into the facility, which includes any DPW traffic and any of our traffic.
There's not much DPW traffic on Saturday either.
Um, correct.
Pardon me?
It's the snow one, or something.
Yeah, right. But the average, I'm just thinking about that average time for the left-hand turn, I just know it's a nightmare in the mornings.
The Saturday issue's totally separate, though, I think we could agree that on Saturday, it's that backup that comes out the driveway and onto the road, which, that other model that they redesigned the whole interior, may take care of that problem. But that's not the problem that I think you are trying to address, and I think that we all really are concerned about, which is, peak hours, you know, cop on the end of Elm Street, uh, you know, seven hundred people or kids go to school at Pembroke, so, I mean, that, at least half of those...
Your point was that, that number was in there, that, that, right?
I don't, I don't believe that, I believe that number is in there.
What you're saying is they're two different situations, and they're being blended together to come up with a number, I think. So the devil, you're saying the devil is sort of in the...
They're not being blended.
Oh, they're not being blended, okay.
Is there any possibility, uh, it being a state road maintained by the town, can we get a, can we extend, widen the lanes there so people can get around these trucks turning left?
Well, if someone can show me a layout plan for Route 133, I'll tell you what we can and cannot do.
Seems like there might be enough room right there. And, and I just wonder if, if that really, if, if, for anyone that is concerned about traffic, I live on 133, and I used to love, and I still do, grilling during rush hour, 'cause I just torture people sitting right next to me. Because it is just, I mean, to think that traffic would be an issue with the dump or anywhere else, I'm sorry to disagree with everybody, but it's negligible compared to the amount of cars that are going through.
I agree.
It's not really going to change anything to increase the, the use of the dump. I think, to me, ultimately, the question is, do we want to increase the use of the dump where it is? Do we like where it is? Do we wanna do anything to increase that usage right there? That has nothing to do with you, that has to do with, with us. But if one of the big stalemates here is that flow of traffic, can we address that with a left-hand turn lane? And I, I know you can't answer that right here off, but does that, is there regulations with, is it a hard, is it like, is it take five years dealing with the state to do it, 'cause it's a state road?
No, not in this case. This is your road.
Because we maintain it.
So the only thing I can tell you, 'cause I live on 133 as well, and I live on the section where they did increase the roadway from essentially a two-lane road, 'cause
And I know you can't answer that right here off, but does that, is there regulations with, is it a hard, is it like, does it take five years dealing with the state to do it because it's a state road?
No, not in this case. This is your road.
Because we maintain it.
So the only thing I can tell you, because I live on 133 as well, and I live on the section where they did increase the roadway from essentially a two-lane road, because I live right near the high school, to what is effectively four lanes. And what I can tell you is people go faster, they are less careful when they go around trucks. I don't, I don't agree. I get what you're saying, that that'll help the left lane, but I think that is a significant concern in the broader scheme of things in terms of road safety, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety.
Well, certainly.
And I wouldn't personally be in favor of that at all.
It changes the sense of the town, certainly. When you widen the road like that, you're making it more commercial.
It's a thruway, but.
Well, I know, it's ironic, because it is a thruway.
You'd actually have to.
I mean, 20,000 cars a day, it's ridiculous.
But what I'd like to know is, I saw in your report that one thing that was recommended was better signage for the, so the traffic light is probably not in the scheme of things, given the volume and given the way things being as they are with the mass DPW, whoever, Department of Transportation what they allow. Why do you recommend, for, given your build-out, beyond just signage? Like, what else could we do? We could perhaps widen the road, that would be one thing.
Well.
Creating turning lanes.
Creating a turn lane, as you say, would create that area for someone wanting to make a left turn. You know, it'd be probably 100 feet long, I'm guessing, that would handle four cars.
And we'd need it on the side coming into town, right?
It'd be a westbound left turn.
Yeah, westbound.
Yeah.
But you are right. What's going to happen is, that will cause, you know, traffic that'll bypass it will just continue to speed on its very little way, so to speak.
But it's a potential solution, I guess what I'm.
And I'm going to have to probably sit with Peter Durkey, and we're going to put our heads together. Because he actually gave me the original construction plans the town has for East Main Street. It shows the old county layout, which doesn't match up with any of the property line information that we had for our property or any of the abutting properties or even the assessor's plans, in terms of what is the actual layout on that section of 133.
You mean where the road is, what's town-owned and what's privately owned?
It's all town-owned, we know that for a fact, it's town-owned.
Yeah.
But we don't know.
The boundaries.
Is it 30 feet wide, is the layout 30 feet wide? Is it 50 feet wide? Is it 100 feet wide? My guess is it's probably an old, old right-of-way, it's probably 33 feet in this area. And I'm sure that probably when they did the widening in your area.
Yeah.
There were probably some land takings.
There were, I was one of them. Saying.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it worked out fine, we got a sidewalk.
Probably when they put the left turn lane in at Main Street.
Yeah.
There had to have been some land takings for that.
But on the section where the, I mean, if they did it right, there's like a section that wouldn't necessarily be a land taking because you could widen on the side of the dump, which is the dump, the cemetery, anyway.
We have wetlands.
Yeah.
I think a, I think a turning lane, about 100 feet long, once there's a truck in there, okay, now there's two other cars, and what do people do? Now, oh, I gotta go there, so I'm stuck out in the middle. I'm stuck out in the middle behind someone else, because now there's a truck and there's six cars and they're still stopping traffic.
You mean with the turning lane?
Yeah.
Someone pulls out as someone's coming around and they can see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everybody's waiting issues.
I'm not saying I think a turning lane is, I'm just trying to think of what are the, given the parameters of what we got, and you're the engineer and we probably only have you for tonight, what are the options?
I'm here as long as you can.
But, well, somebody's paying for you.
So what I'd like to do, because it's getting, it's getting late, and I know there's a lot of folks that took time out of their evenings to come. I'd like to move on to audience and then we can come back to some of this discussion if there's time. But while, while everyone is here and while the applicants here, I'm going to move to audience participation. Unless there's anything specific you'd like to address at this point, and we'll certainly be able to do it later too.
Sure. No, I think everybody has been very patient listening to some of this technical information. So as long as Ken is here, if there's questions for him, that would be good.
Sure. Okay, so if there's anyone from the audience who has anything they'd like to say? Joe, you want to come on up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure.
Wait up on the podium if you want.
Joe Bonavita, San Bernabeu. So to David's point, you know, I was actually going to make this specific point and I wanted to get some feedback from Mr. Mello. You know, I think it's obvious in the morning that that is probably the peak problem. And my question is, what if we, you know, asked the question that, you know, these hours would have to shift from seven to three to nine to three? Okay? Because the nine o'clock hour, pretty much, you know, most traffic is kind of subsiding, the cop is gone. I have to note, the cop is there 8:15 to 8:45. Okay? Believe me, I put that in place, okay? So with that being said, what if we proposed going from nine to three for the larger trucks? Okay, I think the larger trucks are more of the concern than, say, dump trucks or cars or whatever. Would that, to me, that is a good fix. All right, that is, you know, a good negotiation. The question though is to Mr. Mello, I think that still leaves a good six hours, you know, for trucks to come in and out. I think if they knew what those expectations were on a daily basis, they know not to come to town too early, okay? Still leaves them plenty of time to come to the site and do what they have to do. Right? So the question is, you know, is there any opportunity just to do a nine to three, you know, for those larger trucks? Okay? Because I think that will alleviate a lot of the issue.
Okay, fair enough, thanks. So for consideration, maybe want to noodle on that for a minute while we get to some, anybody else in the audience have anything they'd like to? Sure, come on up and state your name and address, please.
Don Sonny, 133 East Main Street. I'm just, I know the traffic outside seems to be the big thing here. But I'm more concerned about all the traffic that's inside coming out. In other words, according to their, you know, your plan there, you get, you get 323 cars on Thursday, 260 on Friday, and 399 vehicles leaving the transfer station in your July showings. That if, I know some of that is the Highway Department, but not the 399 on Saturday. You say that nothing's going to increase, if he increases his tonnage, that you're telling me that the same amount of vehicles are going to be coming and leaving, it's not going to be six times what's there? I'm confused on that. In other words, I don't, I don't know how we can go to 300 tons from 50 tons and not increase and tell me that the vehicles are not going to increase that are leaving that establishment and coming out into the, into the street and creating all the problems inside there now. I mean, I have pictures here that I would love to share with you of the backups that, I mean, I go to the dump every other week. And I'm not going to say every week it's crowded in there, but most weeks it's backed up. So people are trying to get in and get out of there. Some of those pictures I have are with such congestion, I'm almost wondering, has anybody touched base with the Highway Department to find out what type of safety issues it presents for them? One of my pictures shows it's so congested that on a winter day, Mr. Mello never closes down, that if we have slippery streets and we can't get our sanding trucks, our salters, our plow trucks to the spots that they're supposed to get in town because of the congestion that's in there now at 50 tons, how are we going to do it at 300 tons? Has anybody talked to Mr., up to Peter Durkey, found out that, has it been an issue? I know they have a sign there now telling you not to pull over and cover your, and cover your trash at that point because I'm going to assume, I haven't talked to him myself, that it's because it's, it's, they can't get in and out of there. Once those big trucks pull over, they can't get, they can't get their own vehicles out of there to do their work. They are literally working around the commotion that's in there now. Never mind what other safety issues are happening. I have a picture of a tractor trailer taking a turn out of there. I mean, you guys are talking about time delay now. I was pulling up, saw the truck waiting, pulled over, because cars were coming in the other way, pulled over and said, I want to see how long it takes. Sat there for a minute, got my camera out, and finally, I'm sure 15 seconds went by. I see, he was taking, he was going to the highway, so he took the big turn heading out of there. That's, two of them a day I'm sure are leaving the, I mean, Mr. Mello's facility. If you're telling me that by going up to 300 tons, that there's still only going to be two a day or three a day, the math doesn't work for me. I'm sitting there looking and saying to myself, now you're going to have 10 to 12 of these trailers pulling out of there a day. And this was probably around noon time. So, you know, I don't know your traffic study, and I do have a copy of it on, you know, when the peak hours are. But my bigger concern is more the commotion and all that traffic that's inside there going on. Like somebody said, you're going to get so much traffic going up and down 133 now, it's going to happen. Just, you know, cars are coming, people developments are going on, cars are going to increase and that's the way it goes. My concern is just that a business that's operating there now that's probably causing troubles shouldn't be allowed to expand just to create more problems and we shouldn't have to look at it further down the road. Thanks.
Thanks, Don.
Can we respond?
I'm assuming we're still going to get to talk on the nuisance part of this, right?
Yeah, I don't, at this point, this isn't going to wrap up tonight, I don't think it's safe to say, so.
That's my main reason.
Sure, yeah.
I just want to make sure I got.
Can we respond?
Yeah, sure.
To those comments?
Yep.
I think the graphic that Ken had regarding the dramatic change in internal circulation really addresses some of the concerns that were just mentioned and he can get, pull that up for us. But Jason's on the site all the time, he has a good relationship with DPW and he has never had a complaint or a concern with DPW, he can speak to that.
Correct.
And if there were issues with DPW getting snow removal equipment or salting equipment, he would know about it. He's there all the time. So that, I think it was stated that that probably is an issue, that is not an issue, that has never been an issue.
I did have the opportunity to speak with Peter Durkey over the last couple of months. I spoke with Don Cudmore and Peter Durkey and the Sleckman and Planning Board and the Planner and a lot of people, kind of get, kind of just the general take on things. I did have the chance to talk to Peter Durkey and, you know, not to put words in his mouth, the relationship there is excellent, very, very good neighbors. There are issues that crop up from time to time, litter on 133, the guys always go out and pick it up. I mean, whatever, it's, things happen and they're on top of it. Did mention that they are sort of on top of each other over there, it's a very crowded facility. And so, you know, I believe there are instances when there's, you know, some congestion there that, you know, because he's got a lot of equipment coming in and out. You guys have peak times when you got large vehicles coming in and out Saturdays and everything else. So, again, just sort of, you know, I did, you know, reach out to him and so I wanted to express the, the relationship there I think is very strong. So any negative comments about what's going on there, I think, reflect reality. But it's not because you're being negligent, I think it's just the way it is over there. And it is, it is a crowded facility, for sure. Yeah, sure. State your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Phil Obrin, I live at 223 East Main Street. My understanding, I wish I had known what was going to occur here tonight. My understanding is the state closed the dump in 1981 and ordered it to be capped. So the dump was closed, I believe, in 1981. I want to know if there was any space of time between when it was a dump and when it was a transfer station, which is entirely different than a dump. I didn't hear any facts on traffic on Sunday when the dump is open. I believe the dump is open on Sunday, is that correct?
Yes.
I'd like to know where the small trucks go when you increase it by six times and there are bigger trucks bringing the trash in. Where do the small trucks go? I think they still come. So there has to be an increase in trucks, you know, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. I don't know how you accept six times the amount of trash with virtually no increase in the traffic. The other thing is too, one of the counts was done in July when there's no school. I think the count was relatively the same as January.
The count was, the through volume was lower, yes, on 133.
But not much, right? So that means there's more trash in July, I'm assuming.
Now, the volume of traffic that was going into and out of the site was comparable to the January counts.
What about the traffic that was on 133, did you count that?
That was a little bit lower, yes. That was lower in July.
So if there's less traffic going through commuter traffic, then there's going to be more trucks, correct? Was the count about the same?
The count of cars and trucks going into and out of the site from 133 was about the same. The through traffic on East Main Street in July was lower than the count of the through traffic on East Main Street that we counted in January.
Okay. It just, to me, it doesn't add up. I don't know how you bring six times the trash in and there's virtually no increase in the trucks, because the trucks are bigger. So my point is, where do the small trucks go?
Fair enough. Well, you have a flow diagram of the site that we can address, kind of, we had it up there earlier that showed the traffic lanes onsite as far as where do the trucks go. But backing up to the capping of the facility versus the converting to a transfer station. I looked at some documents from a town meeting, and you've done a lot of history on this and feel free to share the history. I thought there was actually an overlap there.
There was.
Because it took time for the town to actually, they were ordered to cap the dump. And please correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm no expert on this. The town was ordered to cap that facility and while that work was going on, trash was still accumulating in town. And at that point, I think it was your company, Jason, that came in and offered to transfer, you know, refuse while that was being capped and then continued that role going forward.
We were actually managing the landfill.
That's right, okay, thank you.
For the last, I believe it was the final three or four years there's an operation.
As a landfill.
As a landfill. And then as they were closing the landfill, we converted it into a transfer station.
And I saw some minutes from town meeting where a lot of this was discussed at time.
Correct.
They approved a contract at that time, I believe, to operate the transfer station.
Yes, and that, and part of.
The original, the original agreement.
That's right.
At least land from the town to do that.
And part of that discussion and in favor of that whole contract was that there would be no discontinuation of service. It would be continuous.
So I don't know if that answers the gap issue as far as the use. And I understand there's some consternation of the difference between a dump and a transfer station, but the history, you know, is that it was, you know, it was operating as a dump, it was being capped, Mello was involved the whole time and it was approved at town meeting. Do you have a, there was an exhibit, I don't, I have a whole list of exhibit numbers here and I can't remember which ones were. There's one that has the flow of onsite, that has the lanes and so forth, delineate. Is that it? I can't, I can't really.
This is the one that shows the proposed, I have the existing.
Okay, so the question of, you know, where do all these smaller vehicles go? Honestly, if it's a dump truck, there are some fairly small dump trucks, contractors use them.
Right.
You know.
And that's still going to happen.
And they're going to go in the facility to dump.
They'll still come in the facility the same way, go over to scale and they'll just go into each, whichever building suits their needs. Dump, come back off, go over to scale, and then go back out.
The smaller vehicles will do what? Those that have trash bags and so forth to get rid, that aren't going to actually dump.
Residential?
Yes.
They will come in here, go through the loop, come down the loop and there is one, two, three, four, five parking spaces here where there are containers for them to drop off residential waste, so to speak. And then they will go out and leave the site.
The loop is a, is a holding pattern for traffic, I assume, and a turnaround, obviously.
Well, no, no, it's the, it's going to be.
Are there dumpsters out there?
Yeah, well, the intent is.
I kind of forgot, actually.
This is the residential drop-off area.
There's various recycling and different dumpsters around.
Recycling will take place up here, MSW disposal down here. So all the residential traffic will be routed through this facility.
Single lane?
Yep.
One car width?
Yep.
But separate from the truck lane coming in?
Yes, yes.
Which I think answers some of the.
So, you know, pickup trucks, you know, pickup trucks with trailers, you know, roll-off containers, they'll all use, they'll come straight into the site, you know, and use the transfer station.
So it'll just be passenger cars.
Residential doesn't have to go over the scales?
Could you clarify? I think there's a misunderstanding about your request for maximum tonnage daily versus what is really going to happen. And the reason I say it that way is perhaps certain days you might reach your peak. You don't anticipate doing that, I don't think, you said that before. But the average tonnage per day will increase. How many additional trailers will be leaving the site on average? None of them are going to be leaving on Saturdays, right?
Correct.
So Monday's a big day. So you might be, you might be hauling out 300 tons on a Monday. Like, how does it work? Like, how many? It's interesting because it's not just per day how many tractor-trailer are going out. It's not going to be 300 tons a day. So how do you?
300 is like a maximum permitted capacity.
Well, exactly, but that's the number everyone's using now.
Because you're looking, analyzing the worst-case scenario.
Well, exactly, so what is it really?
For easy math, every 25 ton is a tractor-trailer.
Well, exactly, but I'm asking you, in seven years, of the five workdays, how many additional, right now, you're, roughly two are leaving or three?
Yes.
Right, so in seven years, how many are going to be going out?
If it was operating at maximum capacity.
What's your financial, what is your business plan? How you, in seven years, what is it?
I honestly don't know if it would ever create 300 tons, if the economy would ever bear the 300 ton. The way we looked at it was the facility, the size of it could handle the 300 ton. We could handle the 300 ton with the traffic, which is why we asked for the 300 ton.
Right, okay.
My anticipation, in seven years, we might be at 150 to 200 ton max.
So that's your business plan right now?
But you're sort of asking about the seasonality, so to speak, of the movement of this stuff over the course of a typical work week. In other words, Saturday, Sunday, like you say, you're not going to, you're not going to be hauling trash out of there over the weekend, but it's accumulating.
Nor am I asking for an increase on Saturday and Sunday.
No, no. What I'm asking is, the townspeople think now that there's going to be 300 tons of trash leaving. In seven years, there'll be 300 tons of trash leaving the site every day. It's clearly not the case.
Correct.
You have some sort of business plan, you have goals, you are going to be reaching out to other commercial trash companies and saying, "Bring your," or only is going to be your trash.
Sorry. I have not looked at using outside companies because I don't feel like I will be a cost-effective solution for them.
Okay, so it's strictly your business plan. You know, you're looking at 100, what did you say, 150 ton?
Hundred, 150, maybe 200, but I don't-
Over a, per day, for five days? Because, you know, it gets kind of weird, because weekends, you bring in again a lot of trucks.
Fridays wouldn't increase all that much either, because we close at noon on Fridays. And our goal to close at noon on Fridays is so that we can get as much of the material out of the building to have it empty for the weekends.
So you're looking at, you'd have two or three trucks going out right now? If you get 100, 150, so you're going to be running four, five, six a day in seven years.
How long does it take to fill one of those trucks, Jason?
20 minutes.
Okay. So going back to Joe's point and my question, if you cut back from seven to nine to nine to whenever, it's 20 minutes to load, takes them, let's say, once there, through the entrance of the dump, takes them about five to 10 minutes to set up, to get loaded, 20 minutes to get filled, five, 10 minutes to get out.
Come in and out of the gate in roughly 40 minutes.
So you could theoretically, in a five-hour window, do five trucks. One an hour, basically.
At least, yes.
And you're saying at 150, that's about?
150 is six trailers.
Six trailers, so you're going to have to fit one in in the odd numbers, because it's a 40-minute window and you're going to do six. You get that time.
I can't think, eliminating commercial traffic to nine o'clock, is that even a possibility?
I would-
I wouldn't know how you could even do that, especially with young, with small commercial, you know, guys like me in a little pickup truck.
Pickup trucks and dump trucks.
Not the small trucks.
But it's, hold on, it's not the small trucks that are the issue. Jeff will tell you this, and I've seen it and you've seen it. When you're driving down, is it the pickup truck that's trying to get in or is it the garbage truck that's trying to get in or the tractor-trailer?
Anybody trying to turn left. I mean, you either have space to turn left and there's an available opening or there isn't. I mean, granted, a larger truck has to have more space because it's full. But, I don't know, I mean, I'm not the traffic guy, but, yeah, I mean, we all become traffic experts in town and we all know where the shortcuts are, because we deal with it every day. So I mean, you know, it just, it is what it is. I'm not questioning the analysis, I'm just trying to, there's some devil in some of the details here and people say, "Wait a minute, this doesn't make any sense."
Or just tractor-trailers.
Anything over, let's say, take a DPW dump truck size.
See, that's the thing.
Or bigger. Not your truck.
No, no, I know, I know.
You know, like, you know, like a dump truck and trucks.
Like a, well, like a garbage truck.
Let me ask you this. Obviously, it takes a tractor-trailer the longest amount of time to get in and out of the facility. It's the longest truck. They're 72 feet long versus a dual-axle straight truck that can pull in and out fairly quickly. If I could limit the hours that the tractor-trailers came in and out, that-
How are you going to, how are you, something like that?
They're his trucks.
Because the tractor-trailers work for me. I'm hiring them to haul the material out.
I forgot, forgot that. Yeah, I forgot.
Just to follow up on the point of the number of trailers. So at 150 tons, you're saying six, five, six a day? So if we get to 300, you're talking 12 trailer trucks a day?
Correct.
It'd have to be around 12 a day. Just so we're clear.
But we already established that we're probably not getting to that point. But thank you, you're right.
That's to be discussed, but I just want to make sure we, from a traffic standpoint, since we're talking about traffic tonight, I just want to make sure. Yeah, there was another question all the way in the back. Why don't you come on up and we'll get to everybody here.
Can you sign in, please?
Yep.
Name and address.
My name's Robert Prosser. I live on 4 Reynard Lane and my property abuts 133. And one of the major issues I have, like, in the morning at 6:00 AM in the morning, there's pounding, boom, 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 boom. There's something going on over at the dump. And in the summertime, I can't even open my windows in the morning because the sound's loud. And then with more trash going in there, there's going to be more banging, more beeping, more backing up of the trucks, because we can hear that, because this is my neighbor over here. We hear it constantly throughout the day and we're kind of far, we're kind of far away and it's really loud. It kind of shakes the house sometimes. And I was just wondering if there's more trash going in, there's going to be more banging, more beeping and more pounding going on over at the dump with noise pollution, not just for my house, but all the surrounding houses that live in the area. Even houses that are further away, you can still hear it, because Georgetown is a quiet town. So when you have a noise like that coming from the dump, the sound travels. And another issue that I have too is, is I live at 4 Reynard Lane, he lives at 6 Reynard Lane. I got a letter about this and he didn't. So what is the notification of the town that this is even happening? Because this just doesn't affect the people that live in the very small area around the dump. This affects everybody. It affects someone that lives completely on the other side of town, because their kids go to school there. I think that maybe the whole town should know what's going on, because I talk to people about it in town, because it's, nobody really even knows about it, so.
There's a-
Absolutely valid point.
Can I just answer the?
Yeah, so we advertised to do your last question first, I think. If you have another point you want to make, go forward ahead.
No, and I'm just saying, like, if the banging's going on at 6:00 AM in the morning now, what time's it going to start to prepare everything that they have, if they have more trash in that dump? Is it going to start happening at four? Is it going to happen at five? Is it going to happen at six? Is it going to happen more throughout the day? That's another one of my main questions, too.
Fair enough. Good. So to answer the question about notice, because you're not the first one who has mentioned it to me, outside this hearing, I got a lot of inquiries. And what we do, and Patty can speak to this, is just so that everybody's aware, the abutters get a written notification. You want to explain how that works?
The applicant has to submit the abutters list from the assessor's office certified. And it hits, it does a radius, so it does a circle from the property a 300-foot radius. You could be next door and miss, just miss that and you did, so you have four here, 4 Reynard, 6 isn't on here, and it jumps to, you know, 205 East Main, 186 East Main, 36 on Elm Street. So it's a radius.
And that's from the assessor's office, just so people understand how it works.
No, and it's just one of those things where, you know, I, I'm from, I'm originally from the city. I moved up here for more quiet and now, you know, a dump is going to expand near my home, which could potentially affect, you know, because in the wintertime, when the trees are down, I have a nice view of the dump from the back of my house. You know, if I, like, what's, it just affects everything, I think. And it affects the town, too. I mean, we don't have much in this town. It's a nice, quiet town, you know, and then we're going to have this, this big lodge facility with nothing else but a big lodge facility in the town, too. You know, I mean, that's how I look at it, you know, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Patty, I appreciate it.
Patty, just-
Have your letter as one of the examples.
Just to clarify, do we post on our website as well as the ad?
When the hearings, okay, so when the, when the application's filed-
Yep.
Do a legal ad, runs to consecutive weeks in the newspaper.
Yep.
Then a hearing notice is posted on the website as well as the agenda.
Okay.
And in the papers.
And in the legal.
Right. And I can tell you that this was discussed-
And I use the Georgetown record.
In pretty good detail on social media. So if you're in the Georgetown Parents Group or the Georgetown Mass Group, I believe Mr. Bonavita brought it up as a topic on that page, actually. So it's been-
Actually, I brought it up.
Did you?
Yes. I'm the one that brought it up.
Okay, no, I just remember Joe's comment.
I brought it up on a separate one. Yeah.
May I respond to the noise issue?
Yeah, I'm going to address that.
And we do have our noise.
Yes, well, we're going to discuss all that in a minute. But I do want to address the point, though. Notification, I think, is something that, you know, the advertisement in the paper, that's, we do what we have to do legally to get the notices out. Does that effectively get to the people, everybody in town that would like to hear about these? No, I don't think. People sit around and read the legal notices in the paper every Saturday morning and just skip right over it and get to something a little more interesting, whether it's the Georgetown record or anything else, people just don't read them, right? They are posted on our website. For anybody who's interested in any hearings coming up, you can go to the Georgetown site, click on, I think it's under ZBA and it's under upcoming hearings.
You can actually click right on All Town Meeting, All Town Meeting Calendar, click on the date that the zoning, it says Zoning Board of Appeal, February 6th. Double-click on that and the agenda will pop up and the notice of hearing attached, it'll be there.
And the notice of hearing is basically the same as the legal ad.
The only thing is, the notice of hearing goes out to those abutters once. Once the hearings are continued, you don't send out more notices. It just, you have to kind of follow it yourself. And like, when this is continued, I looked up some numbers. I got Mr. Ogren and Dawn and trying to pass it on and I kind of did a courtesy notice that I posted up there for last month.
What she's getting at is we may continue this tonight and say it's continued until the second Tuesday of next month and then, and then we realize that they're going to request a further continuance. So everybody makes a plan to show up, you show up, nobody's here. Patty does make an effort to try and address that. But I do think there are better ways that we can get these hearings, you know, out to people. And it's something that we'll bring up at one of our business meetings as to how else we might be able to legally post these on sites that people might, you know, more frequently visit and get the word out.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point that it's not lack of effort. We're not trying to hide anything.
No, yes.
Well, we used to have a local paper that actually, like, kept up with the local news.
Well, that's true. The press box is usually empty on the zoning board hearings. Sleckman, I don't know how you guys get them there, but-
People don't buy papers anymore, so they give up.
They don't come.
Last time that was maybe West Street.
Yeah, I mean, we had, there was a reporter at one of our meetings.
We've got to get our ratings up. That's what we've been talking about for years. We've got to figure out how to get our ratings up and then people pay attention. Okay, on the noise issue, yeah, do you want to address the noise?
Well, we have a presentation prepared on noise, so would you like?
It's about 9:30. Just to answer his question, that same issue came up quite a bit the last few months ago. It is absolutely relevant and it's something that we wanted further information on. They did do a noise study and we've yet to get to that. So I don't want people thinking that tonight's discussion is sort of an all-encompassing thing about this project. We had the noise expert here and we want to address that issue while he's here. And so tonight, it took two and a half hours to talk about, not noise, excuse me, traffic. My apologies. But we did do, asked for noise data as well as odor control and all that. So we're going to, we're going to be moving on in that direction, so.
Would you like our noise consultant to?
I think what I'd like to do, it's getting to be 9:30. Is there anybody else in the audience who has not spoken in the past that maybe wants to come up and address it? I want to make sure everybody's taken care of at least once, given the opportunity to speak and we'll see what we get to and if we have time to get into the next sort of major topic, we'll do that. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, it works.
Okay, sure. Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Stutz placed at 107 Paul P. Road.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Stutz placed it, S-T-U-Z-E.
Thank you.
Seems like the question or the problem is trucks turning left on Volpait, I mean, not Volpait, I'm writing my name here, sorry. Trucks turning left on 133 in. Just, I was just sitting back there thinking, instead of limiting hours of operation, what if the trucks made a right-hand turn into the facility? Instead of coming off 133 and trying to turn left in there, they could get off at 97, come in and kind of go around that way and just turn right into the facility and they don't have a traffic issue.
Put a no-left turn sign up there?
Well, I mean-
I mean, that's what you're talking about, just no-left turn coming in.
He could tell those people, hey, from, if you're going to come in before nine o'clock or something, why don't you just come in this way? And they make a right-hand turn, they come in, they do their thing and they're off. I mean, instead of telling them, hey, you can't start having trucks until nine, especially on a Friday when he's trying to get everything out of there for the weekend, I'm sure he needs all that time Friday to load trucks and get them out. Just have them make a right-hand turn coming in early? Once you get to nine o'clock or after nine o'clock, if they want to come down and hang a left and come in, you know, yeah, fine. Just a thought.
I'm sure our officer on Elm Street would love that. Piling in down by the school to cut the corner. But, no, it's a very good thought. I appreciate that.
Well, they can't actually go on Elm Street anyways. They can't, no big-
No, they can come in 97 into the square and hang right.
Right, but you know what they're going to do? They're going to cut the corner on Elm Street and go down by the school.
I think there's a weight limit sign on.
Yeah, they always abide by that. No, I'm just kidding.
I think you could just-
Okay. No, good point, thank you.
Yeah, that's too simple.
What did you hand me, Patty?
Nothing, I just moved that off the microphone.
Just state your name and address for the record and then.
Danielle Heda, 15 Mohawk.
Hi Danielle.
My question's actually for you. So for the wait time, you have an average from, what was the given range for the peak time?
Seven to eight, let's say in the morning.
I think you did a larger range.
Seven to nine.
Right, we counted from seven to nine, but we look at the peak hour, which is the, in that time period, the four highest 15-minute intervals.
Okay.
And that's the hour we analyze, the highest hour of the peak period, so to speak.
Okay, because I know the real crux, I think, of the traffic concern happens to be during school hours, which would be that eight to nine hour. So I was wondering if you had that, the average for around that time of the delay, the average delay between the-
That's the numbers I quoted earlier in the report, the calculated delays in the report.
Now, but the average that you calculated, I think, was for a different, it wasn't quite that timeframe. I think it was either a larger timeframe or it was a different timeframe.
I may have misspoke about what the peak hour was, but whatever the peak hour was, I may have misspoke about what the peak hour was, but whatever the peak hour was, those high forest, those four highest fifteen-minute intervals constitutes what the peak hour was. And that's what we analyzed.
Now, the other question I was gonna ask you about was on your chart there that says site trip generator, the second page. You said that you used a forty-something mile per hour when you said the average was thirty-eight.
Oh, the eighty-fifth percentile.
With the speeds?
No, I'm not talking about the eighty-fifth percentile.
This one?
No.
Were you talking about the site distances?
Yep. And you said, I was unsure if that was Massachusetts generated, that you were using the forty.
Forty-two miles per hour was the.
In the calculation that you were using.
Correct.
And, but you said the average here was thirty-eight.
The average is thirty-eight, but we use the eighty-fifth percentile speed for assessing site distances.
Last question is, do you have any calculations for turning radius for tractor trailers? Because I know often they're not given enough space to turn and they have to wait for a longer gap to make their turn.
We have looked at, and you're right, based on geometry and restrictions we have right now, we, the tractor trailer does, if it turns right, has to swing out wide to make its maneuver. We're trying to find a solution for that problem as well.
Because I've seen on a couple of occasions, and it may have just been just the positioning of the truck, but sometimes it seems like it's hard because it's not wide enough to make that turn.
That is correct. But we're working on it.
So that needs to be a solution. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the comment. Anybody else? Sure, come on up.
Good evening, I'm John Byrne from Six Randar Lane.
Hi John.
And I just wanna, I'll bring up two points, try to keep it short. Noise, yes, that's one of my biggest concerns along with dust and things like that. And I was wondering if there's been any consideration about the surroundings of the transfer station, like the location proximity to this new school that we have with 700 children in it? Is noise a problem? Does it reach out all the way to there? You've got a church, you've got the state forest, all surrounding this proposed expansion. And one point question I had about the noise, is it possible in lieu of backup beacons for the front-end loader that's gonna be hauling all this debris into these big containers that I think twenty minutes per six X times twenty minutes, to me, that seems like a large increase in noise. But is it possible that in lieu of a backup beacon, could there be a signal operator? Is that part of the ocean, OSHA standard? Is that an option possibly? I can tell you the noise that comes out of that place, that beacon, is right through you. It's very annoying. If you've got young children studying, people working from home, it really, really affects the quality of life. So my second point or concern is property values. Obviously, this will not help our property values and I think it's a lot to ask of the homeowners. I think it's a lot to ask from the homeowners to provide a vehicle for a private entity to make a lot of money off something that the town owns. It's a residential area and I just think it's a lot to ask. And when you people make your decision, I hope you really consider that. You know, recently I attended a seminar and I met a person from Merrimack. And we exchanged, we introduced ourselves and he said he was from Merrimack. And the first thing he said to me was like, oh, I did my basement over and I brought three ton of sheet rock and stuff over there. So, and it happened another time too. So people are associating Georgetown with the transfer station, maybe like they did the old movie theater. People are coming, people are coming from all over. And if we think it's just gonna be for the people of Georgetown, we're crazy. It's not even just for the people from Rockland or Grohl. It's people from Merrimack and beyond. And I'm sure it's gonna be harder and harder to get rid of stuff. And I think they're gonna be coming here. So I think that 300 ton max will, it'll get in eventually. That's my concern.
Thank you, very good, appreciate your comments. Can I address the backup alarm? Uh, yeah, we're gonna talk about noise at some, but yeah, sure.
That will be addressed in the noise study and we do have a solution for that.
Right, I did read some of that as well. And the closure is part of that solution as well. So we have to decide how far we wanna move here and if we wanna get into discussion of the noise. I think we might as well, but I guess I'll lay it up for just a couple more minutes for our audience because this will in all likelihood be continued. I don't think there's gonna be any decisions made tonight. Joe, get to it in just a second. So why don't we do that? We got at least two more and so why don't you guys come on up? And if you have something new to say, you know, I don't, we haven't got a lot of reputation. Joe, come on up and then we'll get to you guys.
Joe Bonavida, 7 Burnaby. Has there been any discussion as to with the heavier trucks coming onto our roads? Any discussion or any study done on the effect of what it's gonna do to our roads?
Wear and tear.
Who's responsible, you know, things of that nature? I will tell you from the selectman's side, a lot of you guys probably know that if this does move forward as it is town land and it is leased back to us or from us, we will be renegotiating, okay, the lease, okay, with the entity, okay? And that is one of the areas that we would like to discuss with the business owner, but we haven't gotten that far. But you know, I wanted to see if you guys had actually done any examination of what this may or may not do to the roads.
Well, my understanding is because it's a state road, we can't limit. I mean, I would love to limit the kind of tractor trailers that go by my house too, but it's a state road.
Well, we maintain it. To answer your question, we have not done a specific study to look at the wear and tear of the town's facilities, you know, based on additional truck traffic in town. I'm personally concerned about it. And it's not just wear and tear on the town, you know, on the road itself. It's, you know, as we come through town, we have a lot to discuss about what, you know, is this something that the town is really, is gonna improve the town overall? Do we want these vehicles coming through our main streets in this location? And as Paul said, there's also, you know, we'll talk about, you know, this use in this location, does it make sense? You know, is the upgrade appropriate? We haven't really gotten to a lot of that discussion yet, but the wear and tear on the roads is not something that we've looked at specifically. And I don't know if that's something that you guys do as part of your study?
We do do pavement design, but we have not looked at the impact of this facility on East Main Street.
But I guess I, and just, I have to say this. The trucks that are going into Mellow, if you look at the grand scheme of things of the number of tractor trailers that are coming through Georgetown, it probably pales the comparison. This is about the town and this is about 133 and having a town road that is a state highway. If you, whether you expand Mellow or not, that's not going, it'll only be marginal about how many tractor trailers are impacting our roadways. That's way bigger than this project. And sure, I would love the selectmen to look at it, but I don't think it's in this purview.
I agree. I agree with you.
Sorry.
I mean.
Sorry?
You know, I see the CWT's and the, you know, this zillion trucks that travel right down 133 onto 97 or take a left and go up 133 down to the end over Boxer and go all the way through there. I don't think that the detriment is gonna be impacted by the six or eight additional trucks going into the Mellow.
But I'd love the town to look at it.
But I would love, that would be excellent, because the roads do need an overhaul.
You got a question, come on up.
Yes, I'm Phil Augren, 223 East Main Street. I mentioned the noise at the last meeting and I was told that there weren't any complaints. And I figured out why I never complained, because I'm now more or less retired, so I'm at home in the morning. For the first eighteen years of my twenty years being here, I was gone at six o'clock in the morning and didn't come back until six o'clock at night, so I never heard them. The other thing is, I wanted to know, I heard mention that there's another piece of land that the town owns out near 95, which would be a better location for this dump. Is that correct? I wanted to make sure that the new people that are here were aware of that.
Yeah, there is a location and, I don't know, Joe, were you guys involved in any discussions with them relocating this facility?
Uh, we are not.
Okay, did you guys have any discussions with the possibility of relocating this facility?
We did actually, after the last meeting, Jason and I met with the town administrator and Jason has had some communication with him as well. And most recently, as of today, Jason did get a response back from the town administrator saying that the National Ave property is currently undergoing its own feasibility study. Nothing has been ruled out, but we are, and I'm quoting here, we are probably a long way out till any decisions are made about that future use. So.
So is that something that you guys may at all be interested in or is that off the table?
I'd be interested in talking about it.
All right.
The size of the, you have to upgrade your facility anyways.
Correct.
Whether you're running sixty-five tons, 150, 300 ton, it's gonna be the same facility no matter what you do. You're trying to get some elbow room so that you can increase, you're trying to get permission from the town to increase the amount of tonnage to help offset the cost of your upgrade. And probably the state is expecting you to increase your tonnage, I'm assuming, because how else would you pay for this brand-new facility? Is that, can you explain a little bit more about how that whole thing works?
And the timeline, because my recollection is it's short, right? You have to upgrade by a certain deadline.
Well, the existing, is it March or April?
April.
So the existing permit expires in April. They're five-year operating permits. And we were told again over a year ago that they would not renew the operating permit without the facility being upgraded. They want a totally enclosed building, you know, dust control, fire suppression, you know, to the standards that they're requiring every transfer station that's constructed today to meet. We actually have a meeting with them on February 15th where they want us to come in and update them, you know, where we stand and what the schedule is.
So how does it typically work? Obviously, this isn't gonna get done by April, as far as the construction and everything, obviously. So you obviously need an extension, you don't get shut down coming April.
Well, we laid out, we met with them over a year ago, we laid out a schedule. We laid out for them, these are the permits that we need, you know, this is an approximate timeframe. We, you know, we couldn't even back then, you know, we couldn't meet that this facility be up and operating by April 3rd. And so they had indicated that, you know, they wanna know, you know, where we would be in the permitting process. And then they would make a determination on how much of an extension they would give us. Or whether to give one at all. So we have that meeting coming up, that we need to update them where we stand and again, lay out for them a revised timeframe for us to complete all this permitting and get this facility constructed. And I don't know what the outcome of that's gonna be.
Now, these five-year permits, I assume in the past have required some sort of upgrades over time? Not obviously to the scale, but there are new compliance issues that have had to come into place. I'm just wondering if a delay or additional time required to complete something in the past is, you know, typical. In other words, you know, you're not gonna meet this, so you're gonna have to come up with a plan of how you're going to. And they're gonna have to, I guess, accept that to allow you to continue operating or. I'm just wondering if this is a typical, I don't know.
What they indicated to us is that, you know, we have been keeping them in, you know, on a, on an intermittent basis, you know, we keep them in the loop as far as, okay, you know, you know, we've been to the board of health, they're well aware that we've gone through the NEPA process. They know that we're in front of ZBA. But now we have to give them an updated timeline because we have, you know, this is only one of many permits that we still have to obtain. And, you know, then they're gonna look at that schedule and tell us whether it's palatable or not. You know, whether, you know, that they think that they can give us an extension for a year. Or if they sit there, you know, they may tell us, we'll give you six months to come up with something.
The facility's gonna happen one way or another, so I don't, it's not contingent on us granting, we're just increasing the non-conformity or whatever we're doing here is increasing the amount of tonnage. The building itself still.
No, they need our permission on all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The building, they need it all, but they're separate permits.
Yeah, those five items that we read off earlier are all within our authority to approve or disapprove. The part that may need to, and I don't know if we can even do this, the part that may need to be expedited is to say, well, you can build the building, but we're not gonna increase your tonnage. Right, I mean.
Yeah, well.
Because otherwise, yeah, I'm just saying, if in the event they go to them and in three months they go back and say, we're still going through the process, and they say, fine, you got, you know, till the end of the year to get it done, no ifs, ands, or buts, then.
I was sort of getting at also if it's, this is all based on a five-year plan because every five years, at one point, is the facility paid for, you've made some money. And then the reality of moving this whole facility to some other part of the town, we need to have the forethought to really consider that this might be going somewhere else. Whether you stay where you are now and in five years you move, or whether you operate for two more years, you get waivers from the state and then you stay two more years in time to broker a deal with the town to move somewhere entirely differently. I mean, that's the kind of planning that needs to be going on here. So I don't know how to do that. That's a, but it needs to be discussed.
I've had plenty of conversations offline about that opportunity and whether it's even a feasibility. And I mean, to everybody who talks about it, it's a great opportunity. Is it even feasible? I have no idea.
Right, and we don't know that. And we have a business that is at this location, that has been at this location for a long time. The Mellow family has put a lot of money and investment into this facility and it's protected as a grandfathered use. We want to expand it, there's a process to go through, which is what we're doing. If there's another location, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, it seems to be, from what we heard just today, a long way off. And what's before you is this location.
Long way off, do you have any idea? I don't know whether that means a hundred years or a year.
Well.
Joe, could I ask you to step in for just a second?
Yes.
Have you guys had any discussions with Mike about this opportunity?
Again, we haven't had direct conversation. If anything like that has popped up, it's been very recently and we haven't been informed of that. What I will say though is that this piece of land that we're talking about is a piece of land off National Ave, which is actually Leamark, okay? Right now, the town is in the midst of trying to attain frontage on this land because it's completely worthless without it. The planning board and our board have done, you know, together, we've done a good job in terms of moving that forward, but unfortunately, this has to go through land court, okay? It is gonna be in land court until probably the end of spring with a decision probably by the end of the summer, okay? So we are a long way off to knowing exactly what we have, okay? And certainly, these folks, you know, probably need a little bit more concrete evidence of what they have and don't have, okay? So whatever we put there is a long way off. We have a lot of discussions going on with different folks about that land, but we have not had active conversations within my board, okay, about, you know, putting this facility there. Okay, and I also have to, a little heads up about the land, it's a big piece of land, right? Right in the middle of it are wetlands, so good luck with conservation, you know, if you feel like you're gonna put that there.
Fair enough.
Speaking of conservation.
Okay, we did have somebody else, come on up. And then is there anybody else in the audience who needs to feel like they need to have anything to say tonight? We will, this will end up getting continued and you are welcome to come back and we'll give you that opportunity at a later date as well, so. This is not a be-all, end-all, but yeah, go right ahead.
Very quick for you.
George, that's fine.
Just some pictures I had taken.
Thanks, Joe.
Congestion that's over there. And just two things, just to end it off for me. I know you're gonna come in with noise, odor and litter specialists to tell us what's gonna work and what's not gonna work. I look at the plans, they just seem so vague to me and less detailed, telling me why the noise is not gonna be there, why doors on it are gonna shut it down and it's gonna solve the odor problems, the litter problems and all that. The one comment I would like to make there is for us to remember here, they're hired by Mellow Disposal doing these presentations to us. Some of them don't make sense to me and some of them are probably perfectly right. But they are hired by him to represent him, to get him what he wants. So we need to make sure, you know, when you start sitting there looking at saying, okay, he's 50 tons, but I'm only gonna put 150 ton a day in there, so don't go by 300. What happens when 300 happens? You come back to us as landowners and sit there and say, well, I guess we messed up. We need to go by what he's asking for. He's not asking for it on the grounds that he thinks that he's only gonna do 125 ton. He's trying to put 300 ton, he wants to make as much money as he possibly can, rightfully so. The last thing I just wanna say is from the man back here is, this is a reputation for the town of Georgetown. I know you brought up the theater and all that. Just on the news, North Anders just turned down marijuana. I know you brought up the theater and all that, just on the news, Northander just turned, turned down marijuana company to go in there that was gonna bring in tons of money for them because they didn't want their reputation in their town hurt. So it, there is a big reputation factor going on whether, and when, and when you bring up the fact that he's been in this town, he's grandfathered in for so long, what did he pay for rent for the first twenty years he was here? Dollar a year? He made his money. He spent it not wisely, that's, it's not our fault, it's residents' account. We shouldn't have to give up our crop and grain because now he's forced to do something that's very expensive. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so it's, uh, close to ten. What's that?
You need a motion if you're gonna go past ten.
I don't know if we need to go, I thought we got a few minutes. Do we, do we feel like we wanna get into noise now, or do you guys wanna continue, or obviously, uh, not gonna get through all of this tonight?
So can I, can I ask how long would the, the, sort of parameters of the noise presentation be?
You're here, actually, I, I forgot that you're here, especially tonight, you didn't think crap.
I think it's quite brief.
Yeah, so why don't we expand past ten and let's, let's, while, I, I forgot that you were here specifically for that.
Right.
Yeah, so let's do that.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, expand pa- past the ten o'clock hour for this meeting.
Until?
Until.
Ten forty-five?
Ten forty-five PM.
Or my thought is just to hear, while he's here, to hear the presentation and then the continued part can be, I don't know how we would answer.
We have a motion, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion, go.
Oh, sorry, it's just, just to hear the expert while he's here.
Yeah, absolutely, right.
Uh, and then, and then continue it from there.
Right.
So whatever that takes.
So we can all it over.
So we can still be brief.
Right.
All those in favor of extending past the ten o'clock hour?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye. Yep.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, all right, so ten fifteen.
Thing.
So Patty's having a, I can, uh.
I know, it's the expression, it's not a worry.
As they say, the floor is yours.
Um, does everyone have a copy of the, this?
Yep, or we, online or here, both.
They have both pieces.
I think you got it electronically.
All right, just what everyone wants to hear this hour, another technical report for you. So my name is Ryan Callahan with Epsilon Associates. I'm an engineer in the acoustics group, and I performed a sound study for the transfer station. Um, the, the goals of the sound study were to compare the existing current day sound levels to the potential future sound levels with the upgrades to the facility. Um, the sound study was three parts. The first part, uh, involved sound monitoring of the existing, uh, facility and equipment. The second part was sound modeling, using a computer model to predict sound levels, both existing and then future. And then the final part was to create this report that you have hopefully, uh, in front of you. So we'll actually turn to the, to the back of the report to figure one. This sort of outlines both the monitoring and modeling locations that were, that were performed. Time to get to there. If anyone needs a color copy, I have, I have some of those as well.
Yeah, I'll take a clean.
So I'm easier to see.
Mold.
Where do you want us to go, I'm sorry?
So figure one.
Figure one is in there.
That's easy. No, it's okay.
Uh, so the blue, the blue dots, the ones indicated as location one, two, three, and four are the locations where, um, I had sound meters. Uh, I spent about five or six hours on the site observing sound levels and measuring the existing, the existing operations. What that allowed me to do was then create an acoustic model, uh, and calibrate it based upon the sound levels that I measured. Um, it's sort of a truth check of the model, so we measure sound levels, and then we put the sources into our model and ask it to predict at those, uh, five locations. And what we wanna see is good correlation between what the model is saying the levels are and what the meter actually measured. Um, so that was the first step of the study. Um, and then results were predicted at the receptors, which are represented by little triangles on there. Um, I'm very happy that some of the addresses we predicted, um, we had some folks speaking today from, from some of those addresses, um, and we did predict results at those locations. So if you'll turn to the next page, uh, figure two. Uh, this is sort of the current day, uh, snapshot of some of the loudest times, uh, that are experienced under the current set of operations. What, what's happening now, I think, everyone's, everyone's been there, obviously. It's essentially an open-air operation, um, with a front-end loader that waits for trash to be placed on the ground, and the front-end loader slams its bucket onto the ground, pushes the trash forward, um, crushing it, and then backs up, and every single time it backs up, it has the trademark, uh, backup alarms. And that happens quite frequently, I observed it all day long. Um, it does, it does happen quite regularly as it's moving trash around. Um, so this snapshot in time shows the decibel levels that are experienced in the neighborhood during that such activity. An actual drop of the bucket with a backup alarm, it's sort of an aggregate sound source of all those things taken into account. Um, and then if we'll flip to the next page, on figure three. Uh, this shows the, the impact that constructing the proposed building and then enclosing that front-end loader within a building, uh, would have on the sound levels. Um, it's important to note that the sound level that's being depicted here is not, not only just the front-end loader, but it's also with what we would hope is the new and improved backup alarm system. Mr. Mello has agreed to install as part of the mitigation going forward, uh, what's called broadband, uh, backup alarms on the equipment that he controls. Uh, these are a very successfully implemented mitigation me- measure. Um, we've recommended them at various sites throughout the state, including quarries and other transfer stations. Um, and the advantages of that backup alarm system is instead of the tonal beeping, um, it accomplishes the alarm by using a, a white noise or a broadband, it's actually a shushing sound, sort of like, uh, air escaping, if you, if you've ever heard them, they, they go pshh, 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 like that, instead of beep, beep, beep. Um, and they're, they're able to be operated at a lower sound level because they accomplish what a backup beeper is trying to do, um, using a lower volume. And the reason for that is because they are, they are more directional in nature. If you've ever had a, a smoke alarm in your house that has a low battery and it's beeping, you can't tell which smoke alarm it's coming from because that high-pitched sound actually echoes, um, all throughout your home, and it just sounds like there's beeping everywhere. It's the same effect with a backup alarm, um, it sort of engulfs the whole, the whole site. So with these broadband alarms, um, it allows you to turn them down, and your ear can actually detect where it's coming from, uh, much better than a high-pitched frequency. Has more, there's different speeds to each frequency, so you can actually start to echolocate where, where that's coming from. If we want to go with detail about the specific results, um, I'd like to just briefly look at table two, which is on page four. Um, so this, this actually shows the, the, what the model has predicted for both existing and then future conditions at those specific residences that are surrounding the, the transfer station. And you'll notice that all the levels come down, that's, that's the effect of placing the, the action, the front-end loader within a building, um, that's, it's kind of an obvious conclusion, but these are the, the quantitative, uh, values. And to put that into perspective, uh, the, the change in sound levels range from a reduction of, of three to ten. Um, if you reduce something by ten decibels, you're essentially making it half as loud. So if someone, if you have your TV on and someone picks up your remote and turns it down to a level that you would say is half as loud as you were just listening to, you would have changed the sound level by ten, ten decibels. And that's what it's doing at, at many of the surrounding residences, um, based upon our modeling. Uh, we did also examine the effects of potentially putting, putting a sound barrier wall, um, along one edge of the property line. Uh, we found that that would not be very effective at further reducing sound levels, and that's in part because once there would be a building there, you would have some reflections and play with the actual building facade. So if you start putting more barriers around that, you can actually start reflecting sound off the front of the building again. So that's sort of my very, very brief rundown of the study. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions about it, but those were the main, the main findings and conclusions of our sound study.
So I have a couple of quick questions, just to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So, so table two is the, um, the only difference being a, a different alarm. Is that right, not the enclosing in the?
No, that isn't.
You said existing versus future.
Yeah, so, so the future is, is assuming it's put in a building with an upgraded alarm, so with the broadband alarm. So we've taken away the beep and we've enclosed the sound source in a building.
Okay, and so table three.
This is, this is a.
It's also at nearby residences with backup alarms and broadband backup alarms wi- with, with the building. So I guess, explain the difference between table two and table three for me.
Sure, um, so what table three is trying to do is strictly compare the current backup beeper alarm with the future broadband alarm, so it's, it's disregarding all other sound. It's just looking at that one moment when the backup beeper is beeping compared to the future if that backup beeper were replaced by a broadband alarm and it was shushing, if that's, if that's the word.
Fair enough. And when you looked at backup alarms and you, you collected your data and you can, you can pinpoint those, that noise as, as a backup alarm, right, I, I assume?
Yes, yeah, that's, I, I assume that's what the majority of the surrounding neighborhood, um, especially in early morning hours, is very likely to hear that quite clearly, it's designed to be heard, it's in a frequency that is very sensitive to, to us.
Right.
And that's, that's why.
So you identify in your data that you collect, you identify that, that?
Sure, yeah, that.
The frequency in the?
Yeah, we can see that, and our, our meter has octave band, so we can see that little octave jump up.
Is there, is there any way for you to identify whether that alarm is an owner-owned alarm or a customer-owned alarm? And, and are you making the assumption that every time one of these things beeps, that it, in, in the next table or? In other words, you're applying this alarm, but every dump truck I've ever seen that comes in and, and puts it in reverse to back into the facility has one of these alarms on it. So, in other words, these, these alarms that we're, you're hearing aren't necessarily all it is. Granted, by him doing this substantially eliminates some of it, but how much of the alarm noise that you're hearing and the data that you collected was his trucks versus the customers' trucks, I guess?
Sure, so that's a good question, and, and yes, obviously, the, the difference is based upon the difference between the transfer station-owned and controlled sound sources and, and equipment. So what we would refer to as onsite equipment, um, those are the sound sources that are regulated and that are talked about in sound studies. If you're talking about an off-site, a different vendor or someone coming in that, um, you may not have control over, uh, we, we don't typically analyze those sound levels because they're outside the, the scope, if you will, of, of a, of a sound study.
What I'm saying is his customers come in, they have alarms on those trucks, backup alarms.
Sure, I think.
And every one of them that goes into reverse is emanating the same sound that the tractor-trailer, you know what I'm getting at? I'm not, I'm not discrediting the study, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
You can't put, you can't put shush alarms on every customer coming in the door.
You're right.
So I, I guess I wanna make sure that we read this in the proper context of what happens down the road. Certainly, there's some improvement that's gonna take place, I'm just wondering.
I think, uh, what I can say is that the front-end loader that, um, is currently owned by the site, uh, that's a large piece of construction equipment, and I believe, I believe the volume of that backup alarm is actually higher than a lot of, well, you've, you've heard some, some smaller sounding on a medium box truck or something. That backup alarm is a much smaller device and is, is actually generating a lower sound level than a larger piece of construction equipment that's designed to be at a loud site. Because it's all about the ambient level, they're trying to be above ambient. So some of the smaller trucks that come, the newer trucks have, I guess, quieter beepers than what that front-end load- that front-end loader has, I think it's the loudest alarm that, that exists, it's, it's the construction equipment, so that's.
And, oh, can I just follow up?
Yeah.
One follow-up question, cause it, on, on the same issue, you're, you're in the open air now, uh, operating in, in open air. As trucks come in and back into that facility where they, where they dump now, they're creating noise. Again, not, not talking about the front-end loader so much, but those alarm, are most, uh, backup alarms rear-facing? On most vehicles, dump trucks and so forth, they're on the, I assume they're on the rear of the truck and they, they face in a rear direction. In other words, if you're standing behind a truck that's backing up, it's substantially louder than if you're standing in, in front of one, is that?
Yes, they, they're intended to be omnidirectional, but they are mounted typically in the middle or back of the vehicle. Um, but in practice, it's just a speaker that has to, that has to point somewhere, and they are always facing.
To the rear, okay.
To the rear, so, so yes, if you were in front of a vehicle, it'd be quieter than in the back.
So where I'm going with that is, um, customers come in now, they back up facing east, I think. I mean, in other words, they back up into that, into that lean to, they face east-ish.
Yep.
Into that wooded area, essentially, with the new location of the, of the enclosed building. Obviously, the building, once they're in there, is gonna do a lot to diminish the sound, but they still have to pull out, put it in reverse, and back into the building, and that's gonna be in an open air. My question, I guess, would be, would there be any difference in the noise the neighbors would hear that live in that direction by relocating the direction in which everybody has to back up when they, when they pull their, their vehicles in? Is it, is it, I don't know if that's a fair question, or if it's?
Um, yeah, I understand what you're, what you're asking, um, I, the, the building is gonna have an open garage door, and I, I should've pointed that out in the, when I was talking through the study, but the, the study actually assumes that the garage door to the, to the building is open, so it's a worst-case, um, scenario. So if someone's backing up towards that opening, um, the reflection isn't going to happen until it hits the back inner wall of the, of the new building, there's not, there's, there's an open garage door, essentially, if that's what I'm understanding, that's the scenario you're trying to portray, or am I missing?
I mean, logically, the building will block some, some.
Right, there, there's a reduction in, there's, there's a reduction in, from what's happening now into the future, of course, because there's gonna be some benefit from the building, even with the door open. If you're inside partially, there's still walls around you on three sides, and the sound now has sort of a, is contained, so.
It's gonna echo off the building, but it's gonna echo off in the, in the opposite direction, I guess at least some of it will. But with an omnidirectional alarm, I'm just saying, the, the building being enclosed is obviously great for a portion of this, but this isn't a drive-through facility where you're driving in and doing all this backing up inside. Everyone's backing up outside, queuing up, and then taking their turn backing into the facility to dump it, and then they pull out.
I, right, yeah. You don't think it's a perfect end-all to noise.
No, I'm just trying to, when I read this, I say, well, this is great, but I, I just wanna make sure that
Sure.
what we're reading is not an assumption that every backup alarm that you register out there at the noise level is gonna be controllable, nor is it gonna be mitigated by the fact that there's an open, that there's an enclosed building there because there are a lot of alarms that are gonna go off as people go into reverse, because they have to back into the building, it's all, it's all I'm getting at.
Sure.
What would, what would, I, I'm intrigued by that, though, would it benefit the neighborhoods if, if the opening were on the opposite side? That's what you were saying.
If you turn it around or something.
Isn't that what you're saying?
Well, I, yeah, well, uh, based on, uh, yeah, maybe, I was really getting at the existing conditions, they all face one way. Everybody's backing up one way, and in the new conditions, every, there's a building there, but they still are backing up, and to me, it seems like there's a lot more neighbors, you know, in that, in those locations.
If you reverse the opening and it's into a denser space.
And now you're facing right at one thirty-three towards, say, Pillsbury Lane or something, maybe not, maybe it's, but anyway, you get, you have the idea.
We understand the concern, let us look at that.
Yeah, existing versus future, you're backing up in a different direction, and is there?
Yeah, I think that's what you're asking, actually.
Can you remind, remind me, where is the, uh, the tractor-trailer, they, it's gonna, where do they back in again, into that, to be loaded?
They're back into the building.
Yeah, whereabouts, cause I can see where.
It'd be the northwest side of the building.
Right here.
Oh, I see it, yep, yep, I see, yep, yep.
Well, it's hard to see, but.
So that's outdoors. He's gonna drop down into a pit there.
Yeah, this, this is a, it doesn't.
Yeah, this is a, doesn't, you know, but this is a truck loading well on this side of the building.
The well is indoors.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the trailers, again, will back into the building and then they're loaded.
But the commercial trucks are where the arrows are, right?
Right, yep, they back in.
The customers.
But again, they will back inside the building also to discharge.
Right, right, right.
So the loading of the trucks will be primarily done inside?
All of it will be done inside.
All of it will be done inside.
Except for recycling or whatever that is down there.
It's reasonable to expect that the loader operation is going to pretty much be inside. That's a significant alarm out there that people are hearing, but I don't want to misconstrue more data.
And again, there's the movement of, you know, again, with the existing operation is, because it's a small, you all are familiar with the building and the site, it's a small area, so he's continuously, you know, five vehicles dump, he's got to go and push everything back up inside, you know, so his activity now is confined to inside the building, you know, to moving material towards the truck loading well. But he, you know, he should not be operating out, or it'll be greatly reduced his need to go outside the building, you know.
Not to talk about peak and peak time of day and all that kind of stuff, but...
Oh, why not?
But early morning noise carries. I mean, people are waking up at whatever time they're over there operating, and you've guys, you've got guys doing certain tasks over there pretty early in the morning. Is there any difference in sound attenuation that you observe early morning versus afternoon versus, because then you get a lot more background noise that comes into play and a lot of other, it gets complicated, I know, but I'm just, to me, at the crack of dawn, you're going to hear a backup alarm much further away than you might with, you know, traffic going by on 133 or something like that.
Sure, so I guess the important thing is that the noise level being produced by the facility, that stays the same regardless of time of day. We're talking about, the front-end loader is by far the most, the loudest and most active piece of equipment on the site. So what the model is looking at is actually a snapshot in time of that loudest moment. So I have many, many, many measurements, and I've looked at all of them, and I took the highest ones and sort of added them all together to produce this sort of worst-case sound level. So it's kind of the banging that is likely heard is probably the bucket being dropped onto the pavement. And then that's dragged across the pavement, which is also very loud, but then it immediately starts backing up and has a beeper. I combined all those sources into one super-source, if you will, and that's the level that we're predicting. So in the early morning, yes, it's more noticeable because the ambient is lower, but that number that you're seeing is the same as at noon, it's just that the background levels come up, so you're not as aware of it.
Fair enough. So you're looking at the worst-case scenario regardless of the time of day?
Yeah, it's blind to the time of day, it's really just...
And is that, is that the levels that you're seeing at the receptors of the residence? When you say you're, when you're measuring, because you, I'm just, I'm just wondering, go back to you. You're talking about compiling...
We use this one colored.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm just looking at, you have the triangular receptors at the residence.
Yep.
Is that the data that you're using to compile?
Yeah, those are the...
I just want to...
Those are the actual receptors right in the model, right at that.
So those are the locations where you're measuring, and that's the data that you're compiling to get your worst-case scenario, is that fair to say?
So the blue, well, you don't have color, so...
Well, that's fine, I got it here, yeah.
The circles, the locations 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, that's where I actually measured.
Okay.
That's where a sound meter, I put a sound meter on a tripod and stood at those locations for quite a bit of time, and measured sound levels that were occurring and took notes about what was causing them, and I could actually see the front-end loader the whole time for all these locations, so it's pretty easy, pretty easy to document what it was. And then those triangular points are where I then asked the model to, I asked the model to predict at 133...
Oh, those are prediction points.
So those are discrete modeling points, prediction points, at the closest residence in all directions.
I was confused, I thought there was actually receptors out there. I thought you actually placed them out there, that's pretty good. It's a lot of work.
How accurate is your model?
So the model at locations 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 was within 2 decibels of what I measured.
No, I mean, your predictive receiver or something.
How accurate?
Yeah.
That's a little subjective, because it, I would say that the model is very conservative in that it operates under, I'll get really technical because it's getting late, so everyone wants to hear these, but the model uses an ISO standard, a set of algorithms to predict how sound travels outdoors, and as part of that standard, it's assuming that every direction is downwind simultaneously. So when you put a source in, like a front-end loader...
So again, using worst-case scenario.
It's a worst-case scenario, yes. It should be a true worst-case. Everyone's downwinded at once, the ground is very hard and not absorptive, if you have three feet of snow on the ground...
Cloudy.
The humidity and temperature are taken into account.
Yep.
So a moderate downwind condition on a cool day is essentially one of the worst for sound propagation, so, and 70% humidity. So it uses all these factors and it smushes the sound out in 360 degrees and tells us what the sound levels are. We see very good correlation when we actually do get to go and then take measurements. When something is built, we do see very good correlation in what the model predicted and what is actually experienced. Usually, the model is always higher because it's so conservative.
That's what I was looking for.
Good.
As usual, I've asked way more questions to talk to people. What do you got, anything else? For Ryan while he's here? Are you the applicant? Is there any noise?
Maybe a question from the audience.
Yeah, do you have one more quick one, it's getting late, so, one up one more time and...
Yeah, I'm questioning one of the board's aware that larger trucks also have an alarm when the bed is up. So now that we're bringing in six times the amount of trash without any increase in the traffic, because the trucks are bigger, then we're going to have bed-up alarms and backup alarms on the trucks. We don't have backup alarms on pickup trucks, to my knowledge. So once they get to...
That was part of my question, but yeah.
Once they get to be like a six-wheeler, they have backup alarms and bed-up alarms, so there's twice as many alarms on the bigger trucks.
And smaller dump trucks have them as well.
Excuse me?
And smaller dump trucks have them as well. Any contractors, anything with a dump, I think, is going to have it.
Quick one, quick question.
Sure.
Well, the sound engineer, so I'm just curious, what is the frequency band of the swisher?
What was your name again, sir?
John Byrne. What is the frequency band of the swisher?
So it's essentially all of them, but it's concentrated at 1,000 and below, so it's more of a, it's a white noise. So instead of a tonal alarm, I think a backup beeper is 1,250 hertz is about where that beep that you hear is centered and that all the energy is there. It takes that energy and spreads it out from, I would say, 100 hertz to 800 hertz, somewhere in that range is where most of it's concentrated.
So it's a flat spectrum, there isn't a spike at 1K?
There's no spike, yeah, it's intended to be flat, it's probably not perfectly flat because of speaker design. But, but yeah, it's just, you know, if you heard the, you turn the cable channel on and it's the static and it's just going, it's that, it's that noise.
Okay. And what is the approximate decibel delta between, I'll say, the loader and a typical truck? It's a dB.
So if the load is 1,250, you're saying?
What's...
You're talking about backup alarm? Like a 6 dB delta or just...
Of the alarms?
Yes.
So if you retrofit, you retrofit the alarm, you mean, if you took the, you take the beeping alarm off and put the shushing alarm on?
No, just comparing the loader to a truck.
Loaded to a regular truck, what is the...
Oh, of the beeping, of the traditional alarm?
Yeah.
It's probably not that much, it's probably 3.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right. It's getting late, I know the video actually has to shut off, and I know Patty has to go, so...
10:45, she can't, she's stepping in for someone, so she doesn't have to sleep.
So, you guys okay if we go ahead and continue at this point, or do you have any brief summary?
Based on what you've heard tonight, are there any particular issues that you want us to focus on for the next meeting? I have been taking notes. My hand is tired. However, are there anything, any issues that you'd like us to particularly address?
I have one.
Okay.
At the next meeting, the residential part, just, is it large enough, can it accommodate?
The onsite, new residential area?
Yeah, so I think we can do that without your experts, but that would be helpful.
Okay. I think it's a, it comes down to simple property value issues. I think it's worth discussing a little bit further, it's one thing I'm going to be tackling next month, is, it just seems like way out in left field, but are there other amenities you can provide for the town if you're granted permission to do this at whatever tonnage is decided? And one of the important things in my mind is composting. Is there any possible way that Mellow can do things like composting or free trash pickup or other things that the town would really benefit from? Because at this point, we don't benefit really from anything aside from having a dump in our town, which is very convenient at times, but it's not to expand its use, what is in it for the town? And one thing that's important to me is the ability to compost and provide compost for townspeople. So that's just like a, I'm not saying it's a, you know, a carrot, I'm just saying, you wanted to know some things that I'm thinking of, what does Gmail have to offer us for the permission to continue to operate here or expand or whatever we decide to do?
Good.
I think we have a motion to, let's see, what's the date of the next hearing? Top of your head, Patty?
We just continued the 40B to March 6th at 7:30.
Oh, that's right, we already did this, right?
Yeah, we're going to double it up.
6th, yeah.
If something like that happens, we have to get someone out at the cable station, because she doesn't...
Okay, so we need a motion to continue this hearing until March 6th at 7:30, immediately following...
Immediately following the first scheduled hearing at 7:30.
I like motion to...
So moved. Easier?
So moved.
So moved.
Karen?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you're continued to March 6th?
Okay.
Following the other hearing that we have.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate your time.
We appreciate your time tonight very much.
We are so done.
We are so done. Sorry, David.
Is this the correspondence, Patty?
Yeah, I was just from Steve. Did you give this to him?
Well, you're helpful.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure. Can I bring it to you?
We're not going to address all those issues. Sit down right now, cross off the things we've already addressed.
Well, they're not going to read it now.
No, I try to, you know me, I try to hit all my notes.
How's that? Okay. Oh, great. That's brilliant.
Well, just stick with it, stick with it for 10 years, you've got to put 10 years in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.